This conference will now be recorded.
There you go.
Okay, we're ready.
Good evening. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided pursuant to the open public meetings by at least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting, given the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda further indicated that formal action may be taken, and this notice was, one, prominently posted in at least one public place reserved for such or similar announcements; number two, mailed, telephone, or telecopy to at least two newspapers. Which newspapers have been designated by the governing body of the Borough of Hillsdale to receive such notices, one of which is the official newspaper of the Borough? And three, filed with the clerk of the borough. Electronic copies of any hearings are available by contacting the Planning Board Secretary or the Borough Clerk. Please note that these meetings are televised live through Hillsdale on Cablevision and Verizon. Uh, there's an addendum here. The Planning/ Zoning Board has established Tuesday, May twenty-six, two thousand twenty, at seven-thirty PM as the date and the time at which a virtual public hearing shall be held on the applications stated below. Members of the public either directly or through their attorney or agents may join the meeting via GoToMeeting from a computer, tablet, or smartphone by going to the following website. That is global dot GoToMeeting dot com forward slash join forward slash two oh seven four seven four seven seven. I'll repeat that. They can go to the website, which is global, G-L-O-B-A-L dot GoToMeeting dot com forward slash join forward slash two oh seven four seven four seven seven. Members of the public may also dial into the virtual meeting by calling one five seven one three one seven three one two. Once again, microphones are on everyone, so just a heads up. They can call one five seven one three one seven three one two two. The access code for the meeting is two oh seven eight four seven four seven seven. Once again, that access code is two oh seven eight four seven four seven seven. The GoToMeeting app can be installed on the monitoring electronic device by going to the following website. Once again, global dot GoToMeeting dot com forward slash join forward slash two oh seven eight four seven four seven 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 seven. I'll try that again. Two oh seven eight four seven four seven seven. A copy of the below list obtained by requesting a copy in advance of the meeting by contacting the Board Deputy Secretary at two oh one three three seven seven four seven oh. The Board Deputy Secretary at two oh one three three seven seven four seven oh. Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM. In addition, the application documents may be available for viewing on the Planning-Zoning Board page of the Borough of Hillsdale website at www.hillsdalenj.org. That's www.hillsdalenj.org. Um, I guess, um, just not to break with precedent, I'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll pause ten seconds for all of our friends and those that we don't even know that passed through by coronavirus or have been afflicted in some way. Now I'll go to roll call by the Secretary. Ed, if you can read the roll.
Of course. Um, Dr. Lixtein.
Here.
Mr. Alter.
Here.
Ms. Cates. Ms. Cates?
She's here, but her rodeo is not on.
Yes, I saw her logged in.
Yes, she is.
Okay. Can she hear us, Ms. Cates? Yeah, I can't. I can see her speaking, but I can't. Okay. Uh, Vice Chairwoman Miano.
Here.
Mr. Raymond.
Here.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Mr. Burleson.
Here.
Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Chairman Giancarlo.
Here.
Council President Horvath. Uh, Mayor Ruko, who I believe is absent.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. I don't know if anyone's joining us here. I haven't looked at all the windows, but if anyone has a question for the board on any items or issues other than those listed on tonight's agenda or that are scheduled to come before the board, please let us know of any concerns or questions. Seen none. I'll close it to the public. I will thank, I just want to take a moment to, first of all, thank both Eds. Uh, Ed Alter and Ed at Chris's office. Thanks for putting this all together for us. Um, so far, so good, so we really appreciate it. It's always hard to do that. Ed, I know, um, you gave a, um, we're full of good advice in regard to this, so on behalf of the board and the people of town, thank you very much for that, Mr. Alter.
You're welcome.
Um, we have meeting minutes of May fourteen, two thousand twenty. Um, that was canceled, so we don't have any minutes. Chris, do we have any other meeting, uh, minutes that we probably should have seen and should have been on this agenda? Not that we'll vote on them tonight, but I imagine the last meeting we had before all this, we still have to approve those minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe those were transcribed by Caitlin yet. I'll take care of that for the next, make sure she takes care of that at home.
Very good. I don't see Nylema's bills, which were distributed on tonight's agenda. Um, any reason for that?
They should be. I advise the agenda, add the bills list to the back of that agenda.
Oh, okay.
Because the new agenda's set up.
All right, I have.
Don't go tail into the.
Go ahead.
They're at the tail end of the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead. I'll bring, um, um, everyone, let's, let's, if we can, if this doesn't ruffle any feathers, let's get a vote on that, and in light of everything that's happened, let's get some bills played for some people in waiting means. Um, I'll need a motion in a second on, uh, on the bills from Cleary, uh, Jacoby, Alfiere, and Jacobs.
Motion.
Motion.
I got a motion for, for Mr. Raymond, and what was the second there?
Our second.
All right, Mr. Alter on the second, so Raymond and Alter. And a roll call when you're ready, Ed.
Uh, sure. Uh, Dr. Lixtein.
These are the five bills dated five twenty, five seven twenty. I go yes.
Yes, yes, those are the ones. Correct.
Okay. Mr. Alter.
Yes.
Ms. Cates. She's giving the thumbs up. Vice Chairwoman Miano.
Yes.
Mr. Raymond.
Yes.
Mr. Reardon.
Yes.
Mr. Burleson.
Yes.
Mr. Friedman.
Uh, I don't believe I can vote on it.
Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, Chairman Giancarlo.
Yes.
Council President Horvath.
Yes.
That's everyone, Chairman.
Thank you very much, and thank you for moving forward on that, Ford. Appreciate that. Um, we are up to the final, um, final people on public hearing, PZO four dash nineteen block twelve oh one. That's lots five through seven, Built for Success. That's at Ten Orchard Street. Everyone remembers. It's a major site plan with use and other variances, application for a two-story apartment building. We have thirty residential units. I think that's been reduced to twenty-four, um, and they were scheduled for May twenty-sixth. Um, we're, we're scheduled to hear from their planner, I believe, and then summation from their council. Am I correct, council?
That is correct, Chairman.
Okay. Um, go.
We're good.
Yeah. Hi, Jennifer, how are you?
Good, how are you? If I, Nylema, if I may just, um, interject, Meredith said that she tried to call in for the audio and got a busy signal with the phone number. I think we should make sure that it's working in case any members of the public want to call in.
I have it. I mixed up the numbers, and I was saying five one seven, but it's five seven one.
I, I did the same thing. Perhaps we should wait a moment and have, who's trying to call in?
Uh, Meredith said she tried calling in and got a busy signal.
Try again.
I called a few times, but I had transcribed the numbers in the area code, so it didn't file five one, five seven one. It worked.
I think we should just wait about, you know, three to five minutes.
Hello. Anyone hear me? Can you hear me? Yeah. I got on. Meredith, I got, try it again. Okay, um. We'll see if Meredith. I think Meredith. He's giving us a tour of her house first. Yeah.
Nylema, is there a way to enhance the picture to include all of the participants? I have, uh, six. Do you see more than I do, or do we all see six people?
No, I see twenty. Uh, if the top of your screen, it should have a little button to click to view everyone. Middle and the top, middle, top three.
Have, oh, everyone. Let me see if that's.
I see twenty-five. Scott.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Scott, are you on a tal, are you on an iPad or on a, a computer?
I have iPad.
That happened to me on my iPad last week. I could only get six of the people.
Oh, yeah, on an iPad, you're right. That's all that'll show up.
You can only get six, and it doesn't allow you, like Zoom, you can swipe right and see the other participants. I, on my iPad, I was not able to do that. I actually switched to the laptop.
The Zoom meetings I've been involved with allow me to see everybody involved in that.
Right.
So, because of the iPad, the GoToMeeting does not allow that?
Um, I did not have success last week with it.
Okay, is, is it suggested that I try to switch, or is this something that I could still, um, have the advantage of hearing rather than just seeing? Are there going to be, uh, documents I need to say?
Um, if, if I may, I am actually, Chris is going to be, and Adam is going to be presenting some of the exhibits while the testimony is going on. Um, so, as long as you have the ability to see that, he's going to share it as a presenter.
Okay, I'd like to see the exhibits rather than just hearing the, um, commentary.
Yeah, that's why we set it up the way we did, so it would be easy for everybody to have it up on the screen.
Great. Thank, I was unaware. I would have tried to went, I would have tried to use my, my, my laptop rather than my iPad.
Nylema, does Meredith intend to vote tonight? I know she missed some meetings. Um, no? Okay, Meredith is saying no, so, counsel, Meredith was not intending to vote this evening anyway, so you should probably know that.
Okay, all right.
Just, just two points of procedure. First, for the record, we could establish who is president and eligible to vote tonight. The other aspect of it is that Ms. Ryder is assisting the board in connection with this application. I think the board should make a motion, second and second, authorizing her to advise the board in connection with tonight's, uh, presentation by the applicant.
Yeah, thank you, Nylema. Um, as you all know, we, um, we had a planner sort of bow out without, without advance notice, so, um, uh, we put a call out to the person who submitted bids, um, in the second round, and he said that, um, he couldn't come, he had a conflict, um, in regard to this applicant, so right now we, um, we made, uh, arrangements through Chris's office to, and Caroline was good enough to, um, basically fill in for this meeting for all of our applications on this. So, per, per Nylema's suggestion, we have to put a stamp on something like this as a board. Um, Nylema, is there any, any particular way you would like me to phrase this?
I think it's a simple motion, uh, appointing Carolyn Ryder to act as the planning board, uh, planner in connection with Built for Success application. Be the same motion on the subsequent application as well.
You want to do it one at a time as they're being heard, or do you want to do them both at the same time?
Why don't we just dispose of, uh, both of them at the same time?
Okay, very good. I, I will entertain a motion for Carolyn Ryder to represent the Hillsdale Planning-Zoning Board on, um, for two applications. Those are PZO four dash nineteen block twelve oh one, lots five through seven, Built for Success at Ten Orchard Street, and our second application of the night, PZO one dash twenty, block fifteen oh one, lot two, Ilda and Edward Biha. I hope I did you well there. Um, Neza LLC, three thirty Broadway. I'll need a motion in a second.
Here.
I'm coming to find.
One more time, did I hear any motions?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, was that, who was that? Elliot and?
Lixtein.
And Lixtein and number two?
I'll second. We're doing already.
Lixtein and Alter. Um, I'll need a roll call when you're ready, Ed.
Okay, Dr. Lixtein.
Yes.
Mr. Alter.
Yes.
Ms. Cates.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman Miano.
Yes.
Mr. Raymond.
Yes.
Mr. Reardon.
Yes.
Chairman Giancarlo.
Yes.
Council President Horvath.
I believe I have to recuse myself for the rest of the evening on matters at hand.
Very good.
So I will be logging off. It's nice to see everyone.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night.
Uh, Chairman, do I need to call the alternates for this vote?
Um, I, I would.
Okay, Mr. Burleson.
How are you?
You want me to wear the mask?
I don't, you don't have, I don't.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes.
And why don't you, uh, move that chair so Howard can have one of the better.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ed. That's it.
So where are they now? Are they, is there going to be one other hearing?
Yeah, the other hearing is starting.
Yeah, the, yeah, um, Mr. and Mrs. Biha, the other hearing is starting now, just so you know. You probably have, uh, you have at least forty-five minutes, okay? Mr. and Mrs. Biha? You have about forty, you have about forty-five minutes, so if you want to do something else and check in later, you can do so, okay?
Oh, okay, so in forty-five minutes, you want us to come back?
Well, you can stay and watch if you want. We're just have, we're finishing up another hearing, so I'm trying to be kind to you and let you, if you have something to do, you can do so. But otherwise, uh, you know, check in thirty-five, forty-five minutes from now. We should hopefully be getting close to finishing that one.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe you guys can mute your, your session.
Okay, thank you. And if you could turn off your mic too, that would be awesome.
Just mute our mic.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Councilman, Jennifer, how do you want to proceed?
Um, just a few procedural, um, issues. Like Nylema said, I just want to make sure that we have a full board this evening, and those board members are eligible to vote.
Uh, Chris, Ed, you and I have not met. Could you just tell us who's eligible to vote tonight?
Ed, did you have, you have a list you passed around of the meetings that were, people that, uh, had participated in, right?
We did. We had sent out the email of the people who had missed, uh, the particular meetings. Um, encouraging them to watch the rest of the meetings if they had missed, so I guess we need to know if those people had watched the meetings that they missed.
I was on, I was on that list. I was, uh, absent for the November meeting, and I did watch the, the, uh, video today.
Very good, so Mr., all right, I'll go around, and, and it's just how, how it's spaced on my computer, so I'm going to go around the room and ask. So we have an affirmative from, uh, Dr. Lixtein. Ms. Miano, you're next. Can you vote this evening?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Daniel Friedman, um, have, did you, have you had a chance to watch all the videos on these? On this application?
Which application? The, um?
The Built for Success, the, uh?
Yes.
You, you, you're, you're good. Okay, so we have three there. Um, moving around the room. Let me see, Scott Raymond.
Yes, Mike, I, uh, I watched the nine twelve nineteen meeting, yes. I'm, uh, I'm available to vote.
Okay, uh, Mr. Alter.
Uh, I've been attending every meeting. I didn't miss any.
Very good, and, and sometimes I know this, but I want to put this all on record, so.
Okay.
Mr. Burleson.
Yes, I think I missed the December ninth meeting, and I watched it, so I'm eligible to vote.
Thank you, Dewey. Stephen Reardon.
Yes, I'm eligible. I was at all meetings.
And, and I am eligible, uh, counsel. But I wasn't doing the count there, Nylema.
I do, I have to count, so, I'm sorry. So Ms. Cates is not voting, correct?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
One of the alternates will not be voting tonight, then. And that would be, I believe, Friedman. So Jennifer, we have.
Nylema, your microphone, your microphone is not good. I mean, it's cutting in and out, so.
Breaking up.
Yeah, you're breaking up.
Better?
Yeah, better.
Okay. So, uh, Jennifer, it appears to me that there are eight board members that are eligible to vote, one of which is our alternate, uh, Daniel Friedman, and we'll have seven voting members tonight.
Great, thank you very much for confirming that.
Um, thanks.
Yep, so just to introduce myself, Jennifer Canaric from Pricemy, Schuman, and D'Armenia on behalf of the applicant, Built for Success. Um, hope everyone had an enjoyable Memorial Day weekend under the circumstances. Thanks for hearing this application this evening virtually. I know this is not an easy task. Um, in talking with your board's professionals, um, all of us are in uncharted territory here, and it's not easy, but we'll all make it work. We're all in this together. Um, just want to confirm adequate notice, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application this evening.
I did review the notice that was published and so by council for the applicant. It's my opinion that this board has jurisdiction over the application. Her notice is in appropriate form, complies with the minimum requirement of the Minnesota Land use law.
Thank you very much. Um, also want to thank Carolyn for stepping in as the board's planner this evening, and thanks to Chris and Ed for assist, assisting on, uh, putting this together and presenting the exhibits for this evening's final hearing on this application. Um, as the board knows, Built for Success is the contract purchaser of property that is approximately forty-six thousand seven hundred fifty square feet, located at what is known as Ten Orchard Street, twenty-two Orchard Street, and twenty-six Orchard Street in the C Commercial District. Property is currently approved with three separate residential dwellings, and we last appeared before this board on February twenty-fifth. We've had several public hearings, and based on the board's comments, we've taken many of the good suggestions made by this board and revised the plans to not just reduce the intensity of the use from thirty units to twenty-four, but we also went through several reiterations in terms of architectural and landscape design, and we're happy to have been able to address concerns raised by this board. Applicant was very appreciative of the positive comments from the last meeting regarding the overall design. We're seeking approval for the demolition of the existing residential structures and the construction of the new twenty-four unit residential structure consisting of a mix of bedroom numbers, and will also include affordable housing units. The applicant is also proposing a lot consolidation of those three lots, along with other proposed improvements, which includes landscaping, parking, onsite lighting, and drainage enhancements. In addition to reducing the number of units from thirty to twenty-four for the board's additional suggestions, the applicant reduced the overall footprint from approximately, of the building from approximately twenty-one thousand square feet to seventeen thousand seven hundred square feet. We also reor, reoriented the building for the board to reduce potential detrimental effects of developments proximity to the railway. The applicant has created an additional buffer landscaping between the railroad and the proposed parking, as well as an additional buffer of landscaping between the railroad and the proposed building. The variance relief, which my planner this evening will testify to, is a use variance where the proposed residential use is not permitted in the C Commercial District, as well as relief for the signage. Um, part of the building is, um, set back, not within the, um, one-third of the building is set back where the sign is proposed, which requires a setback of sixty feet. Um, otherwise, with respect to the overall size, size of the sign, we are in compliance. We are just under a twenty-four point five feet. That was a question raised by your board planner. I have one witness with me this evening, Mr. John Zabo from Burgess Associates, who will be testifying in his capacity as a professional planner. He's been previously sworn in. Um, all of the exhibits that I would have Mr. Statiel put up would be, um, previously marked, and the only other report I received since we last appeared was the board planner's review letter dated May nineteenth, and I don't believe there's any other reports out there. I just want to confirm that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, no other housekeeping items. We can put on our first witness and only witness for this evening.
If I may, I know me as Zabo. I, back from my Oakland day, sorry. Uh, Mr. Zabo has been previously sworn, but perhaps all of the board's professionals can raise their right hand, and I can swear everybody in.
I'll, I'll re-swear. Why not? It's been a while.
You swear affirm the testimony you may give this evening, and it will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Hey. Uh, may I proceed?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Zabo. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. Uh, I wanted to echo the sentiments of our, our attorney, Jennifer Canaric, in thanking the board for indulging and accepting an application under these circumstances. It's not easy.
If I may, before.
Can everybody hear me, or?
I just may ask, um, Mr. Statiel to put up the, um, architectural rendering that we had from the last meeting, just so the board can have their memories refreshed.
Yes, you will start to lose people here, but I've got to, I've got to bring this up, so, uh, here we go. Uh, whoops, wrong one. There you go. There you go, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
Terrific. Um, I, this is a new platform. If you can't hear me, please let me know. I never know how loud to speak, and I don't want to shout, if that's possible. I don't want to annoy anyone. Uh, but if you can hear me, great. Now, I'm going to begin the testimony, uh, by saying that the plan has been revised, substantially revised, in connection and in, in response to concerns that have been raised by the board. But what hasn't changed is the, the testimony that I presented for the rationale under the previous plan for why I felt that this was a appropriate development for the site. But for purposes of the record and to continue, uh, testimony, I'm going to really highlight the changes, how they affect the planning testimony that I presented previously, and then I'm going to summarize, uh, the rationale that your planner has pointed out is required under the law, which is already a matter of public record under my prior testimony. The, um, specifics of the, to the plan, um, are rather significant. The most significant change was the reduction in the number of units. It was previously supposed to be three units. The, the plan has been modified to accommodate twenty-four. That translates into a density.
Um, I'm sorry, John, Carolyn, I'm having a problem hearing you. Are you, somebody need to shuffle papers or something?
Yes, Ed Alter, you're coming up as a speaker, so you have to mute your, uh, mute your microphone, please, Ed. It's Ed Alter, as I, I can see you're lighting up when you're turning pages or something.
Okay. So.
Thank you, sorry.
No, I, I appreciate that. The most significant change is the reduction in the, in the number of units, which reduced the density of the project from twenty-eight units to the acre to twenty-two point four units to the acre. The bedroom distribution now is seven one-bedroom, sixteen two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom. And as a result, now the number of affordable Mount Laurel units are designated for COA, would be cool. Now, this reduction in density is significant because it allows a number of things. It's allowing for a drastic reduction in building coverage. This was one of the concerns that the board expressed. Now, the, uh, building coverage is thirty-seven point nine percent, where previously it was forty-five point eight. It allows for less building mass on the street. Uh, the building has been reconfigured to break up the facades on the, as it appears on the street. Uh, significantly, there's a reduction in the impervious coverage from, uh, sixty-five point one percent to sixty-four point seven percent. Uh, in response to concerns that were expressed by the board with respect to the side yard and the proximity of the building to the rail, railroad. Um, it now, the, the project has been redesigned to provide for a sixty-eight-foot side yard to the railroad tracks, which, again, which is going to be landscaped and provides an adequate buffer from the railroad. We're also able to provide additional parking beyond what is required under RSIS. We're also able to provide additional parking beyond what is required under RSIS. RSIS, as you know, is the Residential Site Improvement Standards requirements of the state, and we required five forty-seven spaces, and we're providing fifty-five. And that was also in response to concerns about not promoting development that will result in cars parking on the street. We have more than adequate parking. In fact, resolution to exceed is actually required, but that's up to the board. And as a result of the reduction in density, there's obviously, and intuitively, we all recognize that there is a reduction in traffic. It's not significant. You heard the traffic testimony previously that indicated that there would be no substantial traffic impacts associated with this project. It will be even less so now with the reduction in the number of units. When you compare the project to the commercial C-zone, and I'm only doing so because I recognize that this is a residential development, not a commercial one, but it gives an idea and some context to the board about the intensity of the development. The development that is being proposed is far less intense than what would otherwise be permitted as by right under the commercial zone. Specifically, the building coverage is at thirty-seven point nine percent, and the C-zone permits sixty-five percent. Impervious coverage in the C-zone is eighty percent is permitted. The project is at sixty-four point seven. So this also, this compares very favorably to the current zone standards that you have. Now, I talked about the last hearing when I testified that the borough had rezoned property to accommodate mixed-use, special, mixed-use, uh, commercial residential development. Actually, adjacent to the property to the north, which is the Verizon Building, and then across the street from the property, the Bank of America parcel. The parcel joining the subject site is MU one. The Bank of America site across the street is an MU two. And when you compare this development, it also compares favorably with the two zones that have been adopted. And, and again, that hasn't changed, except that now it's even more favorable. Building coverage for what is proposed is thirty-seven point nine percent. Sixty-five percent is permitted in the MU one zone. Impervious coverage is permitted to be eighty percent, and we're proposing sixty-four point seven. Building height significantly. Building height in the MU one zone is allowed to be forty feet. We're at twenty-nine feet nine inch. So we're actually below the height that would be otherwise permitted if we were in the MU one and two zones. And the same comparisons can be made to the MU two zone to the south. Seventy percent, actually more impervious coverage is permitted in the MU two, seventy percent, uh, building coverage, I'm sorry, and ninety percent impervious coverage is permitted, and we're far below both of those standards. And again, building height is permitted to be forty feet, and we're at twenty-nine point nine. So this site provides for a nice transition between the two, two mixed-use zones. When you look at density, the project density is twenty-two point four units per acre. The permitted density in both the MU one and MU two zones, and I keep going back to those zones because they're actually right, we're sandwiched right in between those two properties, is twenty. So we, we compare favorably to the density, and I testified last time that the lower density for the MU zones makes sense because of the intensity of the use. You're allowing for twenty units per acre because you're also recognizing that you're going to have commercial development on the first floor. So that combination of intensity requires parking, it requires building coverage, it requires a lot of things in terms of the site logistics of, of actually building that type of project. And what I said was that at twenty units to the acre, we compare favorably because we have no commercial component. And when you compare, you can actually see that because this is a multifamily development as opposed to a mixed-use, we're able to come in with a project that is far below building coverage and far below impervious coverages that would otherwise be permitted in the immediately surrounding zones. So I think that that makes for an excellent transition and an appropriate use sandwiched within these other types of uses that are occurring. The only relief that's required, aside from the D-one use variance, because as was testified to previously, a multifamily use is not permitted in the C-zone, is a bulk variance for allowing a monument sign where the building is not set back entirely sixty feet from the right-of-way or the property line. Roughly half, more than half of the building is set back, but because of the reconfiguration of the building, portion of the building is twenty feet away, triggering this variance. And again, the setback of the building is conforming to the requirements of the setback in the C-zone, so no relief would be required there. So in terms of the, the planning conclusions that I would draw from this is that the significant reduction in the intensity of the development further benefits the project and the community. The planning testimony that I presented previously, providing the basis upon which the use variance approval could be granted, remain valid, and I think more so with the revised plan. And I'm just going to summarize the basis of the, the use variance. I testified to all of these features previously, but, you know, for the purposes of the record and to satisfy Caroline Ryder's, your planner's review, I'll just highlight how I feel the statutory criteria is satisfied. First, you have to show special reasons for use variance. I went through in detail how we'd accomplish that, and the way you do that is you, you, special reasons are generally demonstrated by satisfying some of the purposes of the municipal land use law. And I testified that the project, in my opinion, advanced purposes A, B, E, G, I, and J. Now, that sounds like an alphabet, so I'll briefly go through what each of those are and why I feel that they're satisfied. Purpose A is, of the land use law is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, welfare, safety morals of the community. And I think that this chat, this is satisfied in a number of ways. I think the community has demonstrated that it is trying to accommodate for its affordable housing requirements. It's seeking to diversify its housing stock. To accommodate that, we provide an assistant borough in that venture in trying to get more affordable housing into the downtown. It's one of the features that I really focused on in my testimony, and it's very important, is it's ideally located close to mass transit and shopping. That is beneficial to both the multifamily development and the community. It promotes the use of mass transit that reduces traffic congestion, pollution, and less reliance on personal vehicles. It promotes transit facility use by increasing ridership that supports the Hillsdale Rail Station and bus service along Broadway. And it promotes shopping for local businesses that strengthens the local economy. And I think that in this situation that we find ourselves in the pandemic and COVID-19, this is going to take on an even greater significance, and small businesses are going to struggle to come back and reopen their doors. Having what I called wallets on the ground, a, a, a ready population of, of residents that can walk and take advantage of the proximity to shopping and services is going to enhance the ability to come back from what we're seeking now. And I'm having these discussions with many of my towns about how we help bring back our local downtowns. And this is one way to do it, is to promote mixes of uses that involve residential so that you have what we call, and I coined the phrase wallets on the ground, where people can actually go out, walk, spend, and come back home and not even have to get into their car. So I think that that's going to be even more important as we try to reopen our communities to business. I talked about purpose E, and that's to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and the preservation of the environment. And again, this development is situated ideally in close proximity to your downtown, to your mass transit facilities. We have reduced the density and we redesigned the project even further in response to the board's concerns to make this a very attractive development so that it fits in, and we also are going to provide for affordable housing. Now, where we're establishing appropriate density, we know that it's appropriate because we can fit the project onto the property without any difficulty in terms of having to accommodate the required parking. In fact, we're overparked. The building coverage is substantially below anything that you would otherwise see built as permitted by right or in your own MU mixed-use zones, north and south. We know that we, we are satisfying impervious coverage. The site is substantially landscaped, so this represents an appropriate development within the scope of that purpose. Again, I testified that this satisfied purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. And, and again, what this does is it diversifies your housing stock such that most of your housing in the borough is single-family. And what this does is it gives housing choice, and that's a good thing. And it's ideally located where it should be, where it's not going to interrupt any single-family residential neighborhoods, because first of all, it's zoned commercial. It abuts two multi-mixed-use zones. And we'll get to an exhibit that I'll ask Mr. Statiel to throw up later on. We'll talk about what's going on in the area because there have been changes. There have been developments that have been approved for mixed-use residential in close proximity to this development. And so it fits in, and it's putting the density where it belongs, along a major corridor near mass transit. And I can't emphasize enough how important that is, because this is where, this is how towns historically developed. I spoke about how towns historically developed their downtowns with mixed-use, surrounded by transit and the ability to move goods and people. And this is, we're kind of going back to that, where we're trying to save open space in the environment by discouraging sprawl and redeveloping sites inward where there's existing infrastructure that can accommodate the growth, and this is a classic example of that, in my opinion. Again, purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Again, that, that falls within that category. Purpose I is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good design and arrangements. If you look at the exhibit that's before you, what you see is a, is a culmination of many, many hours of discussions, not only with the board but internally with the professionals, to end up with what I think aesthetically is a superior project. You can see that the, the building colors were carefully chosen. The board had a lot of input in how this was going to be laid out. And you can see the landscaping. The intent here is to, to have a very, very well-designed and highly attractive development here. And again, that would further purpose I. And then finally, purpose J, and, and I talked about this at the last hearing with the prior plan, to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, open space, energy resources, and valuable natural resources in the state, and to prevent urban sprawl and degradation to the environment through improper use of land. And I, I talked about how this project kind of satisfied, and we went through the boxes and ticked off all the reasons why this satisfied smart growth principles that a lot of planners are, are promoting, and also the state of New Jersey promoting smart growth principles. And among those principles is to try to locate residential or mixed-use or commercial developments near areas of existing infrastructure that can handle the development, where there's access to transit through appropriate design techniques. By doing that, what you do is you discourage developing what we call the green areas, where you have open lands. You constrain the sprawl by redeveloping as this is being proposed. So in, in my view, that was a positive thing, and we talked about smart growth extensively. The second prong of the use variance is to show how the site is particularly suited for this type of development. And again, not to get repetitive, but briefly, it's particularly suited for a number of reasons. One, its proximity to mass transit. That's a clear benefit of this location. It's point-two miles, less than a quarter mile, five-minute walk to the rail station, and there's also bus service. And that makes it a very attractive for this type of development. Again, proximity to the downtown and the retail services and eateries that are there, it promotes the local economy. And that, again, the convenience of being able to walk and obtain the services and enjoy the downtown where you have a park, you have the rail station, the municipal building isn't far. All those services, all those features are available to the residents of this project. It provides housing downtown near mass transit, and it provides housing choice, because this will be a rental project, which, as I had indicated, would diversify your housing stock and would offer choice, which is always a good thing. And, and frankly, the borough has already determined that, you know, residential has a role to play in the downtown by rezoning the adjoining properties from their zone to mixed-use. This is not a mixed-use project. What it does is it, it, it fits the site appropriately at the intensity of use that we're proposing at twenty units to the, twenty-two units to the acre, because to add anything more would add more traffic, would, because it lacks frontage on Broadway, which is critical to the success of a commercial use. Mixed-use really isn't going to be viable, a, a, an option for this property, which the applicant recognized. That doesn't make this, this makes this actually an enhanced project because of the intensity is appropriate. But again, it's adding people to your downtown, take advantage of the services and the retail and the eateries that are, that are there, available to them. So for those reasons, I think the site is particularly suited. I talked extensively at the last hearing about how it was consistent with smart growth infill development. And the final prong in terms of the positive criteria is we need to reconcile this application with the Medici decision and to reconcile any inconsistencies that may exist between this project and your master plan. I think that the project satisfies a number of, of goals and objectives of your master plan documents. It, it, your master plans, and I testified to this extensively last hearing, talks about, you know, developing the economy, developing the economy for the downtown. I believe it disachieves that, and how much more important and significance this is going to take on in this pandemic and post-pandemic condition, where businesses are going to try to look for ways to enhance their, be able to open their doors. So that's consistent with your economic policies. It's consistent with your transportation policies, which is seeking to get people out of their cars and use rail lines, alternate means of transportation. And it's consistent with your housing element and fair share plan, which is seeking to promote affordable housing opportunities in appropriate locations. And this particular site is ideally located, and it's ideal for this type of development to provide for affordable housing in a way that, i- in an upscale way. I mean, if you look at the aesthetics of the project, it's, it's highly designed. So for those reasons, I think that the, the positive criteria can be satisfied. And again, I testified to all those in more detail the last hearing, but a lot of what I testified to are still relevant, remain relevant now. And then I think that the proposal actually is, is consistent with and advances the Borough Master Plan that looks at trying to achieve a balance between community and new development, and I think that this development achieves that balance. In terms of the negative criteria, now, once you satisfy the positive, you need to address the negative, which is that no use variance, no, no C variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good, and I'm summarizing here. In terms of, of, of the negative criteria, I focus on two things. The word substantial. There's always an anticipation that there'll be some impact. We, we talked a lot about parking, traffic, design, to try to fit this project on this site. And there's always an anticipation there'll be some, but it can't be substantial, some impact, but not, it can't be substantial. I- in my opinion, when I look at this project, how it's been designed, how it's evolved over time with respect to the changes that have been made, many of which were in response to the board's concerns, I think that there'll be no substantial detriment. In fact, I think there'll be a substantial benefit to the community for all the reasons that I testified to under the positive criteria. With respect to the, to the C variance, there is a, a variance that's required. If you look in at the exhibit that's being posted to the elevation, you see a monument sign. And there's, the reason, it's a technical application of the code. It's set back twenty, ten feet from the, from the property line. It satisfies the maximum square footage that's permitted in the zone. Satisfies the height. It satisfies all the criteria except one. The, there's a requirement that you're entitled to a monument sign if you're set, if the building is set back sixty feet. The majority of the building is set back sixty feet, except for the, the wing that you see before you, which is set back twenty feet. That technically triggers the variance. I testified earlier that that. could be, that we that could be recognized as a C two variance. And what I mean by that is that the board is permitted to grant a C two variance where the benefits of granting the variance substantially outweigh any potential detriments. There was a recognition in the when the law was amended that not all categories of bulk variances or C variances fell neatly within the hardship category, that sometimes it makes sense to grant relief, but that the physical hardship criteria was too harsh and really didn't fit the mold. And basically, what I tell boards and when I when I testify is, you know, if there's a good planning rationale, then you've satisfied the C two. What the sign accomplishes is it it ties the development all together. It identifies it in a very attractive way. I- 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 it's not uncommon when you do or see a multifamily development where there isn't some identifying sign out there. It benefits the project because people can get to the site, recognize it, turn in visitors, for example, particularly are attracted to the sign and then can safely get into the property, not having to circle back or do all kinds of crazy things like K turns and things like that, or go through parking lots. It's a safety feature that allows for quick identification, but it's also an aesthetic feature where it's been very, very it's been attractively designed. You can see how it fits in nicely with the design of the building and also with respect to the landscaping that's being proposed to surround it. And that was testified to extensively by the landscape architect. And then I talked about the benefits of the signage that I'm now summarizing. I and I see absolutely not, I see absolutely no substantial detriment at all to adding this this feature to the site. In fact, I think it enhances the project altogether. So for those reasons, members of the board, I think that I draw the conclusion that it would be appropriate to grant the use variances, that there's a basis for it. I think this is a a positive project for the for the the community. And I think from my perspective, I would love to see this going into a lot of the downtowns of my communities that are now suffering. That would be my testimony.
Mr. Zabell, you had you had an opportunity to review the board planner's May nineteenth report, correct?
I have, yes.
And aside from taking no issue, did you, I guess, Ms. Ritter, did you want to jump in on on any comments or questions?
Hi, no, I'll, I'm more than happy. Obviously, I'll let you and John finish. And then I'm sure the board members have questions. So I'm happy to wait till everyone else has spoken. That's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have nothing further to witness if the board has any questions, comments.
I just, one, one, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, just one comment. The planning report correctly pointed out that there would be all the all kinds of requirements to adhere to COA and UAC requirements. And and it's speculated to that the COA units that are to be generated here will, in fact, be so de-restrictly regulated. That could be a condition of approval. It's also a function of the requirement of your your own ordinances. And and we certainly will comply with that. And that seemed to be a main concern. And then covering the criteria.
Chris, do you have any questions?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll go around Caitlin. Caroline, if you said that that was your preference to go later, we'll we'll go to the board first? Or would you like to go now? I'll give you your the option there.
Hi, Chairman, I'm, I think it would be helpful for the board's questions to get that in. And then, um,
Very good.
I I only have a couple of questions. The the planner really covered my report quite thoroughly.
Okay, very good. I'm going to, Scott, I'm starting to look at you. So I'm going to come down to start with you because you're at just sort of at the end of my my day, so to speak here. So, okay.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Back to you if you have, you know, if you think of something later, I'll come back.
Okay, great. What I've seen over the past several months with this application, there's been a lot of changes. You've actually accommodated a lot of the board's requests. You've changed, you've changed the footprint of the building. You changed the parking. You've done what I think is substantial, which is great. However.
Yeah, just questions now, too. You don't even have to sum up. If you're looking to, that's fine. I don't want to take words out of your mouth. But just so you know, if you feel like you have to, that's what you'll have another chance to do that. So.
Okay, here here's one question. We talked about a fence on the south side, I'm sorry, west side of the property. And there was a little bit of hesitation with a fence of four foot or six foot. Has there come to a, is there a conclusion as to what size fence or if the fence is going to be installed? Or maybe Nylema, you can answer that question?
I cannot answer to that. Jennifer, maybe you can help us.
Sure, that that was a good point, Mr. Raymond, that you raised, that was brought up and the applicant agrees to comply with whatever height requirement is permitted in that zone.
I believe there's a six-foot fence there, and there was some hesitation with the six-foot fence. The landscaping has changed. There's been a lot of changes. And I'm I'm going to hold off there. But as long as a six-foot fence gets reinstalled, the six-foot fence that's there gets removed and and you have a nice, maybe white vinyl fence put in there or or whatever the board decides. That's all the questions I had if that was going to be.
And that's correct. We we want to, I mean, to have come this far and and done the old revisions and trying to make it, you know, the best possible building and design it could be. We're obviously going to replace the fence because it wouldn't, it would be out of, I, it would be out of sorts with what what's being proposed at this.
Good. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go to Ms. Miano, Vice Chairman Miano, and see if she has any questions for the planner. You got your mic, Joanne? You want, all right, you know what, Joanne, I'll go to Mr. Friedman and we'll come back to you. No, can't hear you, Joanne. We can't hear you. All right, I'll go to Mr. Friedman and then we'll come back to you. Daniel Friedman. Oh, now I can, Jo, is that you, Joanne?
I believe so.
Okay, yes, go ahead now. You're on.
My apologies for the speaker. Just remind me again, Carolyn, please, about the hardship component that is is the the applicant required to say why this not being approved causes a hardship for them. Explain that to me again. Sorry.
John, did you provide testimony about a hardship?
No, that that was, there's two criteria upon which, this is a D one variance, which is a use variance to permit it's permit a use not permitted in the zone.
I'm losing John again. I'm like, John's like in an airplane or something. Can you, are you moving?
I'm not, yeah, somebody's got a mute.
Maybe it's me. I'm sorry. It might be me.
There there's the cri- the criteria for use variance is special reasons. We're not claiming hardship here. You know, it it's very difficult on a D one hardship. We're not, we're not doing that. We are, as you, if you read your own planner's report, she outlines very nicely what the criteria is. What we're suggesting and what I've testified to is that we're demonstrating, A, that there are special reasons. Those special reasons are tied to the purposes of the land use law. I've covered that. You also have enhanced responsibility to show how the site is particularly suited for the for this for the use you're putting the property to. We've done that. And then you have to demonstrate, you have to reconcile the use with your own master plans so that they're not inconsistent. And I've I've testified that they that it is, that it furthers purposes of your own master plan in in the ways that I testified to. We're not claiming hardship for that. The the confusion might be on the C variance where the C one criteria, that's for bulk variances, setbacks, coverages, and, you know, things of that nature. The confusion might be that there you have a, you could have a physical hardship related to the property that prevents the strict application code prevents you from complying with the strict app. And then that's that's tied to the property. We're not claiming that either. The other prong of the C two or the the bulk variance criteria is the benefits, variance can be granted if the benefits outweigh the detriments. If only you show how the benefits outweigh the detriments by saying, by proving how it furthers purposes of the land use law and how benefits the community, actually represents a better planning alternative. And I've done that as well. There's really no, we're not demonstrating, we're not talking about hardship here.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions, Joanne?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, no worries. Daniel Friedman, I'm going to go to you next.
I have no new questions.
Okay, Dr. Lixstein.
Well, I I guess my question is probably both for Carolyn and for Mr. Zabell. I'm trying to come to grips with the the particularly suited portion of discussion and and the detriment to the community when the police department say that this, that there is a notorious intersection that's adjacent to this property. And my question is, do we know whether the amount of traffic generated by this project is going, it would be less than if we kept it within the we kept it within commercial zone?
There had been extensive traffic testimony that was presented to the board by a qualified traffic consultant engineer that demonstrated clearly that there was a substantial difference in traffic being generated by a use permitted as a matter of right under your commercial zone and this. And the numbers speak for themselves. They were, there were significant reduction based upon this project. And then now they're going to further reductions by the reduction in number of unit. So that what's being presented here does not contradict the prior engineering testimony that was presented earlier and, in fact, enhances that testimony. Because there was no concern, there was, the numbers were substantially lower than what would be permitted here by right. If you put a shopping center here, you'd have, you'd have here or you don't with this use.
I'm sorry, John, you faded out again. I'm sorry. You said, John, if you put a shopping center here, and then I lost you.
Okay, a shopping center here would generate far more traffic than a residential development of this size. This is a modest multifamily development. And there's, the record has, there's ample evidence in the record presented by a qualified traffic engineer that demonstrates that.
That's what I thought you said, but you went away.
Report from the police department that says that there's a notorious intersection on the corner of Patterson Street and and with the park, I guess, much whatever, whatever the street is.
If I just may, I'm not not really sure what report is being referenced.
The one that's in the record from the police department.
I have a copy of it, actually. It's an eleven twenty-five, two thousand nineteen report from Sergeant Smith.
I'm sorry, you cut out. What is the date of it so I can look for it in the file?
November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen?
The chief Frank Avellia of the Hillsdale Police Department and its zoning board referral was built for success, traffic study.
My my question would be, yes, the chief raised the concern, but is he aware of the traffic analysis that that followed as part of the testimony for this project? Maybe if he had been provided that report, I don't know if he was. It clearly would indicate to him that this was a far better project than anything that would be permitted as a matter of right. And because all of the testimony came, a lot of the testimony came after that, I believe, and that that date.
John, were there more, the development was denser at that point, wasn't it, in November?
It was, and then it was, it was subsequently reduced in density. But intuitively, shopping, any use permitted by right, given the 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 level of development permitted in the C zone, we were allowed sixty-five percent building, eighty percent impervious. That's a lot of development there, and that would generate a lot of, a lot more traffic than this building would.
What size shopping center would fit on this property?
What, I'm, I lost Elliot. What did he say?
What size shopping center would fit on this property? How, it's not a very big property for a shopping center, you know.
But if you look at, if you recall the testimony of the traffic engineer, just using I T E numbers, intuitively, commercial uses generate far more traffic than the residential that's being proposed.
That's my question.
I believe that, I believe the engineer, and I'm not going to testify as a traffic engineer, I'm just basing my my testimony based on what I understand his testimony was, he gave those numbers and he looked at building envelopes. And I believe that's it's all encapsulated in the record.
I have a, I have a couple of other questions, but but they.
I'm sorry, Elliot, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to comment that I believe, maybe if Chris is on, he can confirm or help me with this. The shopping center that's not across, it's sort of across the tracks from the Bank of America, the one that's, now, that's a mixed use, right? That has apartments plus retail below. My recollection is that's also a little over an acre. It's fairly close in size. I don't know if Chris Satil is on and can confirm, but that's my recollection from a few years ago when that was approved.
Yes, Carol, you're about right. That's about the same size drive. That's correct.
So if that gets you, and keep in mind, Elliot, that's one level of retail, a lot of parking, right? There's a lot of parking there because you've designated parking spots for the apartment units as well as, you know, all the 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 parking that's available to everybody. And I think there's ten apartments upstairs. And I don't recall, of course, I don't know up handed building footprint. But I'm pretty sure that was not, that wasn't, I don't think that was a two-acre site. I think it was a little over an acre.
See, my my concern is that in that pro, in that property, almost all the parking is on site. All right. And I worry, I worry about this, where you have residents, you don't have a whole lot of extra parking for visitors. And this, there's only, I think, two-hour parking on one side of the street here. And that's my concern as far as generating the traffic on the street.
We 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 have actually expanded the parking to address that concern. We have fifty-seven spaces. And frankly, that's well in excess of what would require under state regulations with fifty-five spaces, we're required forty-seven. And that was done through redesign because of the concerns you just expressed. That's more than enough. Because remember, RSIS, when they calculate out residential parking demand, they factor in visitor parking. This is above and beyond that. I visited the mixed-use development to the south a number of times. Parking lots generally empty. I didn't, I didn't witness tremendous amounts of traffic. That's just based on my own observation. This will generate far less because there's no commercial component and there's more than adequate parking. And everything works in terms of circulation, aisle design, everything else in terms of engineering.
Thank you. I I have two other questions. I can wait because they don't involve the planner. What has to do with the fence? I I believe that Chris was the one who who was concerned about the height of the fence because of some spraying around the tracks or something like that. Maybe Chris could address that. My other issue was, it was still left up in the air whether or not you would use Belgium block in the parking areas or whether it's going to be poured concrete curb. I I was waiting for a response to that as well. But otherwise, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. If we could take down the shared screen, just because some people have mic problems and it would be used, thank you, it would be useful for me to be able to get visual cues. Let's go to Ms. Kate, if she's prepared for a question. Can't hear you yet, Meredith. I can come back to you. We'll, we'll give you a second there. Not yet. Okay, that looks like a negative. So we're going to move on. Let me see, let me just do.
Chairman, if I may, before we move on to the next board member questioning, I just confirmed with my client that we had agreed to do Belgium block in the parking area.
Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Alter.
Okay, just so you know, I'm looking at that police report and I'm going to quote. It says, "The intersection of Orchard Street and Patterson Street is notorious for motor vehicle crashes." This is before any design was submitted for the new building that you're proposing. So I just want to get that on the record. I have a question for Mr. Zabell. We're we're talking twenty-four units, correct?
Yes.
Okay, in your testimony just before, you said in the beginning that the density was twenty per acre.
No, twenty-two, twenty-two point.
Let me finish what I'm saying. You did say twenty per acre and then later on. Let me finish what I'm saying. You did say 20 per acre, and then later on in another part of your testimony, you said 22 per acre. And I count that as closer to 24 per acre. So what is the density here?
22.4, that was my testimony. 20 to the acre is what's permitted in the MU1 U-zone to join the properties. If I misspoke, I apologize, but it's 22.4.
22.4.
The lie is slightly larger than an acre. That's why it's not 20.
Right. Okay, that's all.
Excuse me, I have a follow-up. This police report, 11, dated 11/25. So I'm sort of jumping in at the end here. What was the unit count at that point? Obviously, it wasn't what it is today. How many, I know there were a significant number of redesigns in response to several public hearings, which is, you know, it's wonderful, it's, that's always something positive to hear. But I'm just curious if the police chief wrote this based on, it sounds like an outdated plan, or if, you know, if there was a plan submitted at that time at all.
That's why I was wondering what, whether the chief was provided, you know, any revised plans or was aware of the traffic analyses that was provided subsequent. I believe it was 30 at that point. I don't think
This report doesn't take into consideration any units. It's just all the traffic in the area as it existed before this proposal was set.
I'm not sure, so that's, so I just have to try to understand this because I've never, I don't believe I've seen this. Was it entered into the record as an exhibit by Lima?
I was not there that night, but understanding is that it wasn't circulated. Can you hear me?
Yeah, sort of. That's why I'm leaning in.
So with regard to that report, my understanding is that it was circulated by Chris Teteal to the board members.
Okay.
And it was circulated to the attorneys as well, meaning to yourself.
Okay, all right. I'm not that I'm disagreeing, I just, we started this back in September of 2019, so we're almost coming up on a year practically on this one.
If I may, it was always 30.
Yes.
There was a prior application that was for 36. That was not the case here. It was 30.
So Ms. Reader, to answer your question, when it was reviewed, it was 30 units.
So when I'm hearing discussion of a lot of different redesigns, one such redesign was a decrease in number of units as well as a building footprint, but it sounds like there's been other changes to the site made in response to comments received from the public hearings.
That's correct. But Mr. Zabo, if you want to elaborate?
The latest plan, and let's talk, let's get it on the record for the purposes of what, so we're all on the same page of what we're talking about. The density of the number of units didn't change until the plan was revised. The engineering drawings were revised on January 20, last revised, on January 20, 2020. The landscape plan was last revised on January 30, 2020. The architectural drawings were submitted last revised, January 29, 2020. That was when the density was altered from 30 units to 24. So in response to the chief's review, he obviously saw an earlier plan and not this one.
Someone's got their buzzer on or something, so. Okay. Ed, any other questions?
Not at this moment.
Okay, we're gonna move to Mr. Burleson, Dewey Burleson. Dewey, can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're perfect.
Yeah.
Good, okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Zabo, he mentioned smart growth and density along the train line, mass transit away from sprawl, which are not exactly the talking points of the day. But having said that, this residential, fully residential project better than having mixed use? Where you'd have retail on the bottom and apartments on top to the borough? How does that impact? Tell me as a planner, why that's
I, for a number of reasons. One, the main reason is this is not on your main drag. This is not on the main street. It doesn't have the visibility that you have on Broadway. I testified to that last time. So I think it makes it less attractive in terms of the mixed-use aspect of it. Right now, you have a nice mix of commercial uses downtown. The fact that you introduced some multifamily helps balance things out. You don't have to have all mixed-use development in a downtown area where you can have multifamily development fit in the way this does, I think enhances the overall, you have to look at the overall area, the whole commercial area, where the mixed uses are going, and where the commercial is, and it blends in. It transitions beautifully into that whole scheme. So I don't think you necessarily want the intensity all the time of a mixed-use site. I'd also point out that your MU zones, that you're permitting mixed use, are larger than this site. This is an acre site, a little over an acre. And so you have the ability to absorb the intensity that a mixed-use project brings in terms of the size of the building that you're required, the parking that has to go onto the site to support it. We don't really have that ability here, that, that we're looking, we're very sensitive to the intensity of the use to make the use of the property fit the property so that we don't fit too much on one site, which clearly we're not here. So that would be my response.
That's fair. My other stronger concern here is the street, the streetscape of this borough block. You have three units that are now being combined as one, and then you're isolating a single unit, which apparently has an older house between that and the gas station. So now, what are you gonna do to this property, and why wouldn't you develop all four properties? Again, as a planner, how does that impact that property owner and the borough? And how is that developable after you do this project and have, and it's trapped between a, you know, a gas station and this very nice building?
It's a very good question, and I testified to that as well last time. First of all, that parcel that's remaining, that's sandwiched between the gas station and our project, is much, it's shallower. It really adds no utility to our project at all. It's just, it's just sitting there. It's a much, it's only, it's half the depth of our lots. Our lots are perfectly configured in terms of depth. What I testified to and what my hope would be is that this development at some point would trigger a desirability of consolidating that corner into another type of development through, in the future. It would be, it would almost be an incentive because the house is isolated, you're right. And keep in mind, I also testified last time how if your MU zones develop the way they're anticipated to, given the criteria in the zones, this whole, the three homes that we're removing are also gonna be an anomaly in the area. And so what we're trying to do is fit into the changes that are planned for in this particular neighborhood. And what I said was, this next door lot doesn't add any utility to our property. It doesn't enhance our project at all because it doesn't have the site characteristic of lot depth. My hope is that somebody would take that corner and make something of it because now you've got all this desirable development occurring. The Verizon building is gonna be redeveloped, the Bank of America site's gonna be developed, this is gonna be developed. The chances are, someone's gonna look at that corner as an opportunity, and that's what we hope for. As a planner, we look ahead and say, what kind of incentive, what kind of development can we promote here? They'll take these older obsolete uses and redevelop them on their own without any intervention from the municipality.
Fair enough. My concern really is in that corner because it's a gas station. You're kind of locked into that whether that gas station is gonna give up that space. And with that gas station, are we looking at a mini mart or whatever? But that, I mean, that's beyond this project. Those are my concerns. You know, the, for the applicant to make the changes, I appreciate that, and I have a lot of sympathy for the applicant for having to go through this, like all of us holding out even for just a decision whether to move forward. So that's my only question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dewey. I'm gonna move on to Steve in Reardon.
How's everyone doing? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfect.
Great. Is it considered ideal planning to erect a residential building adjacent to train tracks opposed to a a normal commercial area that would diffuse the sound for residential areas? And then number two is, is it also an ideal situation when you're laying out any town or city to do so with residential buildings next to tracks opposed to another diffusing element like industrial, commercial elements like that?
The answer is yes. We've seen it over time. It is not unusual to locate density near the railroad accessibility like we are proposing here. If you look at a lot of the residential projects that are occurring today, they're occurring near rail facilities. Don't forget, this site is like five minute walk, .2 miles to the rail station. So that this makes it very attractive to multifamily. In response to the concerns that the board raised, there was testimony by the architect that we're gonna enhance the soundproofing on that side of the building, and we redesigned the building so that it's now 60 some odd feet away from, in fact, exact dimensions. 60 foot, we moved the building 68 feet away, which allows for plantings of trees and buffering. So in combination with the soundproofing that's been testified to and the separation from the rail and the trees and the buffering that's provided, I have seen projects sit on top of rails with residential, and I can name them. I mean, right here in Waldwick, there's a development right on the rail, and it's a residential project. We're looking at redevelopment sites all over New Jersey on rail lines near transit facilities. It's not unusual, and there are architectural and planning ways and design to minimize the impact of the rail line, but it's also not historically unusual. There are existing multifamily in your downtown now, and you can hear the rail as clearly from those sites as you can from here. It's not unusual, and it's how cities, towns have historically developed their centers as mixed use, as accommodating all kinds of activities, which, when you think about it, was contributing to the vibrancy of those centers until sprawl came.
Well, touching on that sprawl, do you feel that, you know, this might be outside of our context, but is the sprawl actually gonna be reversing where people are not commuting into the city anymore?
That's a long-term question. Obviously, the trend was different now, you know, before the pandemic, and there's a lot of planning discussion about what does this mean for cities? I don't think this is gonna be the death knell of cities. I think people are gonna change in terms of their habits. The long-term impact is yet to be seen. We're still debating that issue. It's too early to tell.
Okay, I didn't mean to get too deep with everybody. I just wanted to
Well, it's an interesting discussion because we're, we need to be aware of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Did I miss anyone on the planning board of the members? Okay, Caroline, our planner.
Thank you, Chairman. Just first like to say hello and thank you to the board for asking me to help out in this, in the situation, for anyone.
Thank you very much, by the way.
My pleasure. I know there's a couple of familiar faces and a couple of unfamiliar faces. So I'm Caroline Ryder. I'm the planner in Chris Teteal's office. I've been employed there for over 20 years. I have in the past been the planner for Hillsdale. I do represent municipalities in Bergen County and as well in Passaic County with both general planning and affordable housing planning services. So just in case anyone doesn't know who I am. So first of all, I want to thank Mr. Zabo. I think he might have repeated some of his testimony for my benefit because I'm new to the, I'm newer to the case. I did prepare a report dated May 19. I do think it lays out pretty clearly what the required proofs are. I'd like to just briefly go through that report, and we can talk about with the board, you know, the board needs to, members need to determine if they feel those proofs are met. And I do have a couple of follow-up questions for the applicant's planner. So as we've talked about, this is a use variance because the residential use is not permitted in this zone district. This is a commercial zone district. So the residential use, and someone even asked, why aren't we doing mixed use? That also is not permitted within the commercial zone district on this subject property. So you'll have to prove for a use variance, the applicant has to show both the positive and the negative criteria. The positive criteria referred to as special reasons. And those are said to exist when the purposes of zoning of the municipal land use law are advanced. And the applicant's planner listed several reasons that he felt, several purposes of zoning that he felt were achieved by this project. I think he listed four or five, actually. And then he went through and described all of them in pretty sufficient detail. He then went to talk about the suitability of the site. We discussed a lot about smart growth, about the proximity to transportation, mass transit, about the proximity to downtown, and I think he used the expression wallets on the ground, that it's always a nice idea for for downtowns like Hillsdale to have that residential element, to have people within walking distance to utilize the shops, the restaurants, et cetera, all the services. And so he had go over a number of factors for suitability. With respect to the negative criteria, the negative criteria, it shows that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. There was a lot of discussion about the master plan with respect to that and master planning goals. I will point out, actually, forgetting, except for the housing element, which I believe was adopted more recent, which was, was adopted more recently, as many towns are doing, the master plan and the subsequent reexamination, and then the amendments to the reexamination, those, I believe, were all done before the latest affordable housing decision that occurred in 2015. And I think that's another important point that to bring up, that some of the master planning comments or recommendations that might be in our master planning documents didn't, well, of course, we knew we'd have an affordable housing obligation. We didn't know that it would be handled in the manner that it's handled now by the courts. At that time, COA existed and had certain responsibilities, which it no longer does. We didn't know the obligations would be the way that, the numbers would be the way that, the level that they are now, and also the involvement of certain other groups. So it's a little bit different of a system for affordable housing than did occur at the last time your master planning documents, your reexamination report was done. I think that's another important point. With that being said, though, John, Mr. Zabo, the one, one of the big questions that I have is, I appreciate that you referenced certain master planning goals that are, you believe, this project enhances and meets. But what, what I would just like you to maybe explain or go, or repeat, or go into a little bit more depth is, this is not a site that's recommended for the residential use within the master planning documents, which I just indicated predate the current affordable housing situation, nor are they included within the housing element, correct?
Correct.
So can you just maybe repeat yourself or expand a little bit or talk about that a little bit with, in terms of, in terms of rectifying that?
I think that the fact that they were not included in the housing element specifically does not necessarily preclude the fact that they are appropriate for this type of development, as I testified to under the special reason criteria, the particular suitability criteria. And reconciling the use with the goals of the municipality as expressed in their master plan and housing element. I often, I do a lot of these housing elements, and you basically are reacting to how to negotiate the best obligation you can to minimize the municipality's exposure to overdevelopment. Because you're, what's, this is a good discussion. What has changed? You pointed out pre-March 15, 2015 Supreme Court, and now, what's changed? When it was under COA's jurisdiction, it was an open process. Planning boards, they were published numbers. Planning boards were then, you know, went in public forums, developed plans, and vetted them out, and then there were mechanisms to reduce your obligations and negotiate with COA pursuant to the code rules. And it was all public, and it was all out. What changed was it became a legal process once the Supreme Court made a declaratory judgment action. Well, what that means now, it's all becomes negotiations between certain parties that are like Fair Share Housing that are involved in litigating these type of actions, potential developers. All of this is under the guise of legal process, and it's totally different than what we've dealt with. And so you're focused on numbers, you're focused on trying to meet your numbers. Now, the fact that this was not specifically chosen, this little street, doesn't preclude the opportunity to help meet some of the obligation at the borough. to help meet some of the obligation that the borough has. You you have a plan that satisfies your realistic development potential, but you still have two hundred and thirty four units. Um, a hundred and ninety nine units, forgive me, of unmet need, which this can then help you satisfy. Uh, you have a mandatory set aside ordinance, which is normally required as part of your settlement agreements with Fair Share, which contemplates that there will be other sites beyond the scope of a housing element that may be appropriate for housing that the borough may choose to to approve. And then that also recognizes an obligation on that parcel outside of your housing element. All of those mechanisms are there. Uh, as planners, we love to be able to have a crystal ball and say, we know everything, we know where everything should go. And you can anticipate everything. And so this particular site fits in well within the scope of the overall community fabric and the way I've described it. And I don't think that the fact that it was overlooked necessarily precludes it as as an appropriate housing choice. In fact, that's why we have variance applications. Uh, that's why the the statute is established to to allow for your consideration of this type of application. And the burden is on us to satisfy the criteria and we feel we've done that. But that'll be ultimately the board's judgment. That's my best explanation.
That's, no, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and as you indicated, this property, interestingly, is sort of sandwiched between two sites that were selected within the housing element, um, and the two MU sites. Um, it's also important, uh, I don't know if you, I don't recall if you testified to this last time, that, um, the borough does have an unmet need obligation. I believe you cited correctly a hundred and ninety nine units. Um, and so it's, of course, the borough has met its obligation and its requirements and done everything it's supposed to do to get it due. Um, but nevertheless, there is that unmet need obligation, um, that, uh, will be considered during monitoring and, uh, the midpoint review and, of course, going forward to round four, which I know, I know, nobody wants to talk about that.
Well, that that might very well become your prior round obligation.
I I got a question here.
Of course, we, I'm sorry, and that's right. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Chairman. That's, nobody, nobody knows what's going to happen in round four. So I'm sorry, Chairman, I interrupted.
No, 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 I I just haven't heard this line of of reasoning before in any other application. I I think what I'm hearing is that because there's COA units in this, approval of this will help us meet our obligation, whether there is, you know, you know, but I I thought those questions have been answered to Fair Share's very high satisfaction of the way our town, our our planning board responded, and not only in a timely, but in a in a proactive way. Um, am I hearing the argument that that, you know, the the board should should consider this because of the extra COA units that are involved?
No, I I'm, I am suggesting, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I did testify tonight and at the last hearing that I testified to that this was going to help the borough meet its obligation. You've done a fine job with your housing element and it's been signed off. Uh, this unmet need cloud exists in many communities, particularly with, when you take a vacant land adjustment and everything else that Carolyn's well aware of. And it's a cloud. Um, I I am not suggesting to this board that you accept this project solely because it it it's an affordable inclusionary development. I'm suggesting to the board that there's a host of reasons why this is an appropriate development and that this is one that will contribute to meeting that obligation. But it's not the sole reason, and I'm not going to suggest here for a moment that you're obligated to approve it solely because of that. That is not what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman. What I'm saying is it's an opportunity. It's a great opportunity.
Right, it would be, it would be one of, one of, one of any development that would have to have fifteen percent or what have you correct added to it.
Right, that's Chairman, that's the borough has, John referenced it, the mandatory set aside ordinance, which I believe every town that received a vacant land adjustment is required to adopt such a mandatory set aside ordinance. And it's meant to capture affordable housing opportunities exactly like this one. In other words, a town that has a vacant land situation like Hillsdale, like so many in Upper Bergen County, you know, that they, that with, that can, that needs a vacant land adjustment, that has this sort of catchall, uh, uh, townwide mandatory set aside so that, um, opportunities can be recognized where they are appropriate for a variety of other reasons.
Okay, understood. Thank you, sorry to interject. Caroline, do you have any other questions for the applicant, the planner?
And just so that we're clear, since we are talking about affordable units, so these would be, these would be rental, which is why the fifteen percent set aside was appropriate.
Yes.
Yes. And there would be the appropriate split between moderate and low income.
All of that would be stipulated to, we've stipulated to that. In fact, that's why we have the one three bedroom unit, because we have to meet.
Yes, the affordable one, you have to.
That's, that's where it came from.
That's right.
This project is designed to satisfy every criteria required under the, uh, the local ordinance that you've adopted for your affordable housing and with COA requirements in UAC.
One of those units, then would one of those units be very low income?
It'd have to be.
It has to be, right, because I'm just checking, just so that there's no misunderstandings. Um, because sometimes, you know, these things are discussed and then if they're not built till a few years later, sometimes you want to make sure that everything is done properly. Should the board make a decision to act favorably, which I don't know what, you know, that's of course up to the board. But we want everything, uh, properly, which is why I tried to include everything in my report that could, um, come into and be a factor with respect to the affordable units.
Correct.
With respect to the sign size, my comment was just that if you're gonna, you're not requesting the variance for the sign size, so don't, if you're not exceeding twenty square feet, period. Um, we're just making sure of that, that you're gonna, you're gonna meet the requirements, um, of the sign.
We don't ask, we don't get. Why, that's it, not part of the application.
Okay, um, I think those were all my questions. I'll, okay, because I'm just going to review my notes. I don't know, Chairman, if anyone else has any other follow up.
We'll call around and again, we're, we're, we're informal in the sense that if people do, for whatever reason, want to ask another questions, please, please let me know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did want to make one, I'm, I'm so sorry, Chairman. But I believe Dewey made a comment about mixed use and I just wanted to follow up with that, that I think John touched on it, but mixed use, especially in a smaller downtown setting, is not necessarily the two mixes of uses in the same building. It can exactly, you know, something like, uh, a one, a building that only has residential can provide that mixed use to the downtown environment where there is only commercial. So, um, while this may not be a true, this is not a mixed use building with respect to the building having both commercial and residential in it, it still is maintained, it still is part of this mixed use fabric and of the downtown. I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was pointed out, too.
Good, this, uh, Chris, do you have any questions? Chris DeTeal.
I was just going to follow up on the, um, the police chief's, uh, comments about the notorious intersection. Um, just sort of, I want to go back to the traffic report, that's what I've been looking at. The, uh, traffic report that was, uh, prepared by Stonefield talked about, uh, they did traffic counts, of course, on weekdays as well as Saturdays. And, uh, a typical weekday morning, uh, two hundred and four vehicles will pass by the site and go in or come out of the intersection at Patterson Street. The estimate based upon the ITE trip generation manual says that the AM, which is the heaviest volume, will be, will be bringing onto the roadway eleven vehicles in the peak hour. So that's about one vehicle every four or five minutes will be entering the traffic flow. The reasons we've had crashes at the intersection of Patterson Street, although I haven't had any recommendations by the police department, one is the Pascak auto body six foot high chain link fence, which you can't see through, goes right up to the property line there. So it's, it's difficult for drivers to look northly as you, as you approach the intersection. And, um, that's one of the problems, you have to pull out of the intersection to actually see what's, what's coming down the road southbound. Uh, the police department, I think, did recommend removing a parking space or two on street parking to open up that, that visual corridor some more. Uh, so I just want to get the board a feel, about two hundred vehicles, plus or minus in the AM peak hour, of which this project would generate eleven additional trips. The PM generated about fourteen trips and on Saturdays, about nineteen trips. Of course, Saturdays, the peak period would be more midday, like eleven to twelve o'clock, uh, in the morning, that's their peak period. So it's a very, very modest increase in trip generation due to this particular site. So I just want to bring that up to, so the board members, uh, sort of a feel for what the traffic engineer said in his testimony.
I'm trying to ask Chris a question on that.
Go ahead.
The fence that you're talking about, why the auto body shop, is that your observation? Or is that the police department's observation?
That's my observation, um, because it's, that's the difficulty in pulling out of the intersection. It's one of the reasons why it is difficult at intersection. Another reason, of course, is, as we do know, that is used as a bypass for downtown, Hillsdale Avenue and Broadway, a lot of vehicles will try to circumvent that intersection and use this as your, as your automatic bypass, as a bypass. Not to say that makes any difference, but that's the other reason why. I can say with certainty, there are far worse and more dangerous intersections in the borough that we've been correcting over the last fifteen years with different types of traffic controls. But I have not heard from the police department, I mean, any, any, any recommended changes or alterations to this particular intersection, which we could certainly make if they, if they had some specific recommendations. I mean, I'll follow up with the chief.
Yes, sir. I think it's very interesting that the police didn't mention the intersection of Worcester Street and Broadway, which in my mind is a, is a more problematic intersection than the Patterson Street one. So I guess you gotta sort of take everything, uh, in perspective here. I mean, they made other, have analyzed it as thoughtfully as we may have liked.
I think you're right. Uh, I think one thing that plays a little different on Broadway is speed. As vehicles come into town southbound, they tend to be, be, you know, I said they're speeding, but they tend to be picking up a lot of speed because it's a downgrade. We we put up that flashing speed limit sign to try to, you know, enunciate the drivers to slow down. Where on Patterson Street, as you point, you don't quite have that speed problem, you know, it's limited to twenty five miles per hour. It's, uh, you know, it's a stop intersection, so, um, you don't quite have that severity, severity in the accidents. You know, accidents occur at all intersections, but, um, it's the severity that's most concerning to us, such as Pyramid Avenue and Magnolia, Skidmoreback Road and Washington Avenue. We had a lot of very severe accidents here because we have high speeds, uh, which, um, is more of a detriment than the low speed crashes, but it's just a matter of information.
I'm going to go around and give everyone a chance to ask. I'll start with, uh, Scott, do you have any other questions? We, you started off the last time. No que, no questions, Scott?
No, I'm sorry, I have my microphone off. No, no questions, Mike.
Okay, no worries. Steven, I'll come to you next. Steven Rude.
Yeah, no further questions, Mike.
Okay, um, Dewey?
Uh, no, no more questions.
Ed?
No further questions.
Elliot?
No questions.
Um, let me see, Meredith?
Um, I'm okay, thank you.
All right, and and Ms. Miano, I see a wave. Let's see if she's gonna get on here. There you go.
Can you hear me properly?
Yes, we can.
Off of speaker, off of speaker, off of mute. Um, I actually have two questions and I'm not sure if we can answer them. I had made some notes from the last time we met, which seems like forever ago. And, um, one of the comments that I had made to myself was talking about the, um, the density of this particular, um, you know, apartment, you know, site as opposed to the population or like the density of the, of the places that we've already approved. I know that's kind of like an obscure question. I had, um, made notes to myself saying that it was a hundred seventy percent, but that may have been when, um, when it was thirty units. So I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that.
I'll try with Christopher. I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I know it was dense initially, you know, as far as the mean, but, um, again, I don't know how that has changed. Uh, Chris, do you have any?
The density on this current application with twenty four units is, uh, twenty four units, uh, to the acre is a, I'm sorry, excuse me, it's twenty two units per acre, uh, twenty two per acre. I know that the, um, I believe that's consistent with the, the, the MU one and MU two zones that they're looking to, uh, that they proposed, the boroughs proposed. I did do a, I did do a summary of a couple, a couple of, uh, facilities in town. I don't have those numbers handy, I have to look those up, uh, of the, of different multifamily, uh, developments in town. Colonial Village, Stony Brook Developers with seven units per acre. That's it, because those are townhouses, a little different situation here. Um, we have the development off. Patterson Street, corrected, we had seventy, forty seven units up there. I've got, again, I don't have those handy. If I can find those quickly, I will come back on and let you know that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just quickly respond to that, as long as we're on the topic. I think to help you analyze the project in terms of density, look at the context of the the development, the number of units and how it fits on the site. And I I would be hard pressed to argue this is a overly dense project, given that we are, the building coverage is as low as it is. We're able to accommodate more than required parking with, while maintaining a substantial open space component. And I think you look at the number of units and say, how does this density fit on the project and give it context? And it's not any more dense than what you have right down the street. It's all parking, all building, most of it. And it's not far off from the twenty units that you're permitting next door, across, you know, across the street and right next door, which also has not only twenty units to the acre, but commercial underneath it, recognizing that that's a larger site. So if that helps you, I mean, that's the context that I would offer that you, that, you know, you could look at the project and get to that analysis.
Right, no, I understand that, but I still would be curious to know, you know, what the density is of the apartments that are on Patterson Street and also the ones that, um, that we had on Broadway. Now, my notes that I had made back in February said that this density was a hundred percent or a hundred seventy percent of the, um, those existing ones. Now, that may have changed because this may, I may have written these notes to myself when it was thirty, not twenty four. So if Chris could find that and, or take a quick look. Um, another question that I had talking about, you know, the agreement that was made with the Fair Share Housing people and, you know, how, how far into the future are we, um, like in terms of dates? Are we considered satisfied, if that's the proper word?
So, um, Joanne, it's Caroline. Um, your approval, the round three approvals run through, uh, July twenty twenty five. Um, so five more years. We're at this, right now, what's called the mid, the midpoint. It's supposed, it's midway, halfway through what's supposed to be the round three period of twenty fifteen, um, through twenty twenty five. Okay, all right, that's helpful. And regarding density, um, the apartments on Patterson, not the, not the Walski site, but the one much closer to this property, um, I believe that's a much higher density. I want to say that's a really small lot, like maybe sixteen thousand square feet, Chris.
Um, yeah, I know, I was talking about the recent ones on Patterson, like the ones in the Walski property.
Right, I was right. The Walski property is much bigger, of course, because there's, um, environmental constraints on that site. Um, that was forty, I think forty seven units, um.
Forty, I believe.
Forty, a nine acre? Nine acre?
Yeah, nine acres total, the actual, the actual pad is two acres that they're built on. Two acres plus, I think it was, I think, I I can, I'm checking that right now.
Let it go quiet a little bit, see if Chris can come up with it, otherwise, um, we'll move on.
All right, so I'm done asking questions.
You'll take a few minutes, Mike, just continue.
Okay, I'll give you a few minutes. Okay, very good. Um, I'll go back to our professionals, Caroline or anything, otherwise I'll go back to Jennifer and let her sum up. Anything, anything from you, Caroline?
No, I appreciate Chris's additional comments with respect to the police chief's, um, referral. I think those were helpful. It was also helpful to know that his referral was done prior to this current design with the number of units. Um, I don't believe I have anything else.
Very good. Uh, counsel, um, go ahead and, um, if you have, if you have any- Counsel, go ahead and if you have, if you have anything to say, otherwise you're, you're free to sum up if you would like.
No, I'm good. I don't know if we want to just wait for Chris, if he can put his hand on that.
Sure, we can do that, of course. Then once, once we hear from Chris and then Caroline, we'll, we'll go around the board and we can talk, you know, talk, sort of brainstorm amongst ourselves or, and ask and ask, answer and ask questions among ourselves.
Great.
Mike, meanwhile, do you want to open the public for the witness?
Thank you, no, that's actually terrific idea. Yeah, I'll, I'll take this moment to open it to the public. If any callers have been listening and have questions of this witness or of the board, please, please interject. There are none, I'll close it to the public while we're, while we're doing it, I'll just take a little poll. How does the board like the way this is working so far? Would you like to do this again in the future, next, in two weeks?
I think it's very good.
But you're in your garage, so I don't know.
A lot smoother than I thought it would have went.
Very good, very good. I was having flash, go ahead, who's talking?
Just have a question for Jennifer. Jennifer, do you know if a height variance is required? Do you know if a height variance is required in connection with that six foot vinyl fence?
Off the top of my head, no. Um, I, you know, I could look it up on Ecode real quick if you want me to.
No, no, when Chris comes back on, maybe we should ask that question so that if you do need a variance, maybe you want to amend your application to request it?
I certainly would, yes.
Yes, I'm opinion, but you can have a six foot fence up in the front yard, up to your, your building setback line. Uh, because this is a commercial district, you can have a building up to the zero, up to zero, you know, right up to the sidewalk, I'm assuming, up to the right away line. So it wouldn't, it would not necessarily on its own require variance, if that would be the case. It's a little unusual of a fence society in a commercial district.
It's a six foot fence there now, Chris?
Yeah, as I say, in the, normally the fence has to be set back, uh, six foot fence, no close to the front yard setback line, but because it's a commercial district, of course, then that setback is right at the right away line. You, you, zero at the right away line in commercial district. That's the little bit of a, you know, a difference there.
And no variance is required.
That's correct.
Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, Mike?
Did you have a question?
No, that was, no, just a comment about the fence.
Sorry, Nylee, Mike, cut you off.
No, no, that was my only question. I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Chris, how much more time you need there?
Okay, so for the, just for the Walski property, the, I mean, the total, the total property is, uh, with several acres. Um, I don't know, I'm just trying to see in a plan, it's probably four, four acres, which goes back in the back of the past gap. Most of the property was unusable because of the wetlands, the wetland buffers. The actual property or pad of the building is on about a three acre site and there are 40 units there. So, you know, you've got, you've got about 13, 13.3 units per acre.
Thirteen and a third per acre, yeah.
Well, I'd say, yeah, based upon a three acre side, maybe a little smaller than three acres, I was being a little bit more, a little more conservative there. So that gives you some feel for that, that site there. I'm gonna, the site up on Broadway is, is much denser. The Paterno site, I believe that's a very small site. I can tell you that, with that, it's in a minute, if you give me a minute. At the Paterno site, which is off Broadway, uh, by Kenny Bauer, the kitchen, for those who aren't familiar with it, that was a development approved a few years ago. There are 14, 14 units there on point six, seven acres. So it's pretty tight up there. That yields about 20.89 units per acre.
20.89 on Paterno.
That's correct.
Thirteen, thirteen point, 13.33 on, you think, these are just estimates, we'll say, on.
They're pretty close, good.
Yeah, and then, okay.
The only other comparable site would be, say, Colonial, Colonial Village along the railroad tracks. Those are, those are, you know, two and three bedroom units. That's the only other comparable.
If I, if I could just interject one observation about all that.
Yes, Mr. Zabel, go ahead.
I think, Mr. Chairman, it's informative, but we're not trying to come here and say, we're not using those as precedent because each site has to stand on its own merits. Based on the criteria that Caroline has described in a report and what I've testified to. So, you know, what you've approved either by variant, you probably by use variance on one site, may not, it doesn't may not, it doesn't set precedent for this site. Every site has to stand on its own merits. And I think that, you know, through the testimony that has been provided thus far, it's informative to know. I mean, good planning, you want to keep track of what it is that's going on, but each site stands on its own merits. And we feel that the testimony that's going to the board should, you know, strongly supports why this project fits this property as it does, notwithstanding what the board may have done elsewhere for reasons we, we don't know at this moment. It's the only reason I would, I, I interject this, just again, to give a little context to the discussion, frame how this information can, can be used. But to me, we have the burden to prove that this site is particularly suited, meets the special reasons, meets the burden of the, of the Medici decision, all of those things as a standalone project.
Okay, very good, well, well put. Miss Miano, do you have any other questions or you, you satisfied with that answer?
No, that satisfies the, um, my question. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Counsel, you're free now, yours, all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, first and foremost, thank you, thank the board for your time and hearing this application. It's actually, believe it or not, been three, six hearings total that we've all been together in, in a single room and this last one virtually. We started the project, first hearing was back in September 2019. Um, obviously the role has changed during this trying times, but I commend all of us in the way we've been able to adapt, such as doing a virtual meeting, it's not easy. And I commend all the board, Chairman, how you, um, basically coached us through this, this virtual meeting with this many people. You heard testimony from several experts throughout the course of this hearing. As shown through testimony, the applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval, use variance approval, for a side variance as well as lot consolidation. As previously stated, we've had several public hearings and based on the board's feedback, we've taken many of the good suggestions made and revised the plans to reduce the intensity of the use from 30 to 24 units. And we also went through several reiterations in terms of the architectural and landscape design. We're happy to have been able to address those concerns raised by this board. We're seeking approval just to, for the purpose of, of the record, for the demolition of the existing residential structures and construction of a new 24 unit residential structure consisting of a mix of bedroom numbers that will include affordable housing units. The applicant is also proposing a lot consolidation of those three existing lots with other proposed site improvements, including landscaping, lighting, parking and drainage enhancements. In addition to reducing the number of units, per the board suggestion, we also reduced the overall footprint, and I'll just reiterate those numbers, 21, approximately 21,054 square feet to 17,734 square feet. We also reoriented the building per the board's suggestion to reduce the potential detrimental effects of the development's proximity to the railway. Specifically, we pulled back the building 68 feet from the railway and we added substantial buffering between not just the building itself, but the parking area. You heard testimony from our engineer regarding the site plan and overall design, and he addressed any of the concerns raised by the board and its professionals. You also heard testimony from a traffic engineer on the safety and adequacy of the proposed use and its relationship to the surrounding roadway. We submitted a traffic study, which concluded that the proposed development would not have a significant impact on the traffic operations of the adjacent roadway network and that the site driveway and onsite layout have been designed to provide for effective access to and from the subject property. The project also supports the parking demand. In fact, we're overparked from the RSIS standards. The board engineer's review letter, and as Mr. Stachel testified to this evening, takes no issue with this submitted study. Trip generation counts were conducted also at a nearby multifamily residential building at Patterson Street and verified the trip generating, generation used in the study and is consistent with the local conditions. Additionally, because of the existing commercial zoning on the property, the development could be developed as of right. And our traffic engineer testified to you that those uses that are permitted would generate two to five times greater traffic at peak times than the traffic proposed for this residential use. Most importantly, the peak hour traffic for this proposed use would be much less than the traffic than any other of the permitted uses for this site. All of the traffic testimony presented has been uncontroverted with no objection from the board's professionals and no studies were performed to contradict the testimony and proof submitted by the traffic engineer. Finally, with respect to the traffic, testimony was presented of the, even though the police report of November, it's not significant, but several accidents along Patterson, Oregon. We did pull the, we did pull and provide for the record of the number of accidents occurring at the closest intersections based upon the data that we were provided from the police department. You heard testimony from the architect with regard to the design of the building. The amenities to be provided, and we provided samples at the last meeting of the actual building materials. The architect provided three separate renderings per the board's suggestions and the last rendering that was shown at the last meeting and this evening has taken into account all of the comments from you. And as a result, we ended up with a beautifully designed building. The applicant is most appreciative of those positive comments in the last meeting and we feel that we've come up with a rendering that the, that the Hillsdale and hopefully a proposed building could be proud of. You heard testimony from the landscape architects who provided testimony as it relates to the proposed landscape design and buffering around the site. The site has been carefully designed to be aesthetically pleasing. And again, as with the architectural design, the applicant has taken great strides with the landscape design to provide a beautiful development. Uh, we have also agreed on the record this evening to provide for the fence as well as the Belgium block within the parking area. And finally, her testimony this evening from our planner regarding the positive benefits of the proposed residential use and that there are several special reasons to support the approval. In summary, we have a community need for affordable housing. We have close proximity to mass transit and shopping. Our residential development downtown will serve to strengthen the local economy and make this use particularly suited for this location. This development would be a boost to the Hillsdale economy. In the light of what our region has been dealing with, the applicant is willing to invest even in times of uncertainty. The site is proposed to be developed at an appropriate density with, with a reduction from 30 to 24. This allows for the construction to be in compliance with the requirements of the C-zone and the footprint of the building complies with all bar requirements, with no C-variances required, but for the variance for the single sign. We're not seeking any setback, coverage, any type of C-variance relief. This project will also diversify the borough's housing stock and provide a must needed, meaning housing choice in the community. Like the old saying, if you build it, they will come. This region is, is seeing an influx of residents coming from out of the city to find certain calm in the suburbs. The building and the site is attractively designed and enhanced with landscaping features, as previously mentioned. And in addition to proving special reasons, the subject properties in question are particularly suited as our board planner, I'm sorry, our applicant's planner testified to its proximity to mass transit, its proximity to downtown retail and eateries, thus promoting local economy, and it provides an appropriate housing choice near mass transit in downtown. This app, this project could be reconciled with the Medici decision in that the proposed project is consistent with the master plan and advances important borough master plan objectives. The proposal achieves a balance between community and new development as per your land use element. Again, it diversifies, diversifies the borough's housing stock. It also encourages job formation and retention while supporting business development per the borough's economic plan. As mentioned by applicant's planner, it will put wallets on the street. Residents of the development will have ready access to downtown shopping services and eateries. All main streets throughout this region have been hit hard during these times with many small businesses. This project will bring new residents, which is a huge benefit to the Hillsdale economy. As per the borough's circulation plan, residential development near the train station creates increased commuter activity that further supports the food and retail uses that are being encouraged by the plan. And lastly, it promotes alternative transportation with the subject site within five minutes walking distance to the railroad. The proposed project we submit may be granting approval it is seeking without substantial detriment to the public and will not substantially impair the intent of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. It will provide a critical need for housing in a community where 86% of existing homes are single family. And we've done it through a design that minimizes site impacts on the environment, the road, network and upon the neighboring residential properties. The design is high end, the applicant took the board's comments, designed an aesthetically pleasing building. We've taken great care to keep the building within a footprint that has been further reduced and does not violate any of the bulk requirements as previously mentioned. It is important to also note that this application, as presented, has received no objection from the public. We've taken great pains to address the concerns of the board and spent considerable time, expense and effort in doing so. We want this proposed use to work and we've tried to accommodate all of the concerns of the board and its professionals. Most notably, the applicant's decision to reduce the, the units and to reduce the footprint. The board should review this application based on the proofs before it, as mentioned by the applicant's planner, specifically on the testimony and reports presented during the hearings. The record, as to the within site and the within application, has been established. Here the record through expert testimony on behalf of the applicant and the board's professionals is demonstrative of the satisfaction of the criteria for the variance, variance relief necessary. We believe that this board has a great opportunity to be progressive by approving this project. The times are changing now even more so, with many municipalities in Bergen County having a commuter rail line taking steps to provide housing in close proximity to the train. To name a few, we have Ridgewood, Emerson, Park Ridge and River Edge. The applicant has presented a project that we believe will look beautiful when all is said and done. Project has stood the course of six hearings and the applicant with input from the board has worked considerably to provide a project, again, that Hillsdale can be proud of. When the evidence presented in support of the application and based on the proof presented to the board, we respectfully request approval of the application and ask that the board grant approval for same as testified to throughout the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Goes without saying, the applicant is well served by their attorney. So thank you for your professionalism all the way through in your patience, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, that said, it's back to us and in a moment, we'll, we'll, we'll get to weigh in on this. Now, Lima, do you have any words of wisdom and caution or what have you about how the board should look at an application such as this?
I do, I want to ask for the board members that they should evaluate this application on the basis of the record alone and not with regard to other developments that have been approved in Hillsdale, whether that was during the declaratory judgment process or otherwise. So the applicant is entitled to your review of this application in consideration based only on the facts and the record. The other aspect of this is however you vote tonight, please make sure whether you vote this up or down, you put your reasons on the record. But we're creating a record here, there may be a subsequent appeal, so just, just be mindful of that as well.
Very good. Board members, do you have any questions for our professionals, for Nylema, for Chris, for Caroline, anyone like that? You have any questions or comments for each other before I, I put it, I entertain a motion in a, in a second?
I have a quick question, Mike, just because I missed, if it's okay?
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't.
I don't, I don't remember, and Ed and Scott can help me. I don't remember any conditions in terms of landscaping that still need to be discussed or Chris, the EC referral, everything's good with that, right?
Scott, you want to go first, or you want me to go first?
Sure, I'll take it. There were some changes, Meredith, that we pointed out, and Dewey's actually part of this as well. There were some trees on the north, sorry, the east side of the property that we're a little concerned with, the development of a certain tree in a certain area that should have been changed, and the landscape plan was amended to, to take that into account. So I think it also, the buffering on the west side of the property was addressed as well. So I think everything that we spoke about, whether it was Dewey, myself, or Chris, everything was addressed and amended as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, let's do something else to say.
Mike?
Yeah, forty, there are eighty-six trees being...
Let him finish, Naima, and then I'll come to you. Go ahead, Chris.
Let me just say, yeah, there are forty-three trees being taken down and eighty-six are required for reforestation. They're providing thirty-nine trees, so there'll be a, there will be a, there will be a shortfall in deficit, which still have to make up either in trees or cash contributions. I'll just check in my notes here. So that's what we word that.
Thirty-nine new trees, so thirty-nine new trees are going up?
That's what I, my report, yes, and they require eighty-six. So there's a, there's a slight deficit of about forty, forty-seven or so trees.
I made one notation which I forgot to mention. The applicant has agreed to a number of conditions that have been posed upon, that have been posed by the board. Some of those conditions have been satisfied, some of the conditions may not, may not have been satisfied. So those conditions still apply. To the extent that revised plans have to be submitted, it's incumbent upon the applicant to ensure that that's done, assuming this application is approved by this body.
That's correct.
Can you, Naima, can you go over the, the changes or recommendations that the board has made that the applicant has to adhere to prior to our vote?
I don't have my entire file with me, but every single condition that the applicant agreed to remains part of this motion, whether it's the motion to approve, those conditions will continue. What we discussed tonight is, again, the applicant has reaffirmed that they will comply with all the requirements pursuant to UHAC, any sort of affordable housing regulations in the state of New Jersey. That includes, but is not limited to, any and all applicable deed restrictions, affirmative marketing, advertising, and the like. That goes without limitation. Those requirements set by the state, and we have a municipal planner, affordable housing planner, who will be assisting if this application is approved. So the applicant is bound by those requirements. This evening, the applicant also agreed to include that six-foot white vinyl fencing, and to the extent that's not been shown on the plans, again. Any and all items that are not, have not made its way on the plan need to be put in the plan, and it's a final set submitted for review and approval by the board and the board in prior to the adoption of the more memorializing resolution. The applicant also agreed this evening to utilize Belgium block in the parking area. Is that correct, Ms. Knarek?
Correct.
Okay. There was also some discussion, and this has already made its way into the record, but there was some discussion regarding enhanced soundproofing and as well as the buffering of trees and other plantings. The applicant has previously agreed to that. Again, that remains a condition of approval as well. So everything that I've said tonight is, is in addition to and not in place of all the conditions that have been previously read into the record and agreed to by the applicant.
Can I just ask one more question? Chris, was there any, was there any, was there any indication or suggestion of fencing along the, the north side of the property or the east side of the property, or we, or was it just suggested and agreed to for the west side of the property? Do you recall?
Just the west side of the property. One concern was the railroad sprays of herbicide annually along the track bed, and I don't think they would want that to be, you know, land the top of their landscaping. So I think this, that's where the six-foot fence came in to protect against that. You'd also asked for, somebody asked for some benches on the site, Belgium block curves, and they agreed to do irrigation of their, of their, their property. Those are things I had written down on the, my notes during the site review, site plan review.
And that was full irrigation of the property and not just the front? I remember there was some discussion about just the front, and we had asked to include all of the property?
That's correct, yeah. And I think somebody asked for, have some benches, I guess, placed for seating outside, which I don't think was a, a big problem with the developer as far as I could, I could tell.
Right.
And that's what I...
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for our professionals? Okay, Naima, without, if you have anything last thing to add, I'll ask for a motion.
No, I have, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion for this application.
Going to make the motion to approve, Mike.
Okay, we have a motion from Scott Raymond, and Scott, that would be with all the, with all of Naima's, you know, the fencing. Naima, you can list everything, you have, you have Naima's list, correct?
I have, I don't have my entire file with me, but I do have every single condition that the applicant agreed to. That's been written down, they've been previously read into the record, the applicant has agreed to it. I agree with Mrs. Eldat without limitation, that includes full irrigation on the property and, and everything else that we just discussed this evening and over the course of the last six or seven meetings.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Waiting for a second, anyone with a second?
Can you hear me? I said second.
Which, who, no, I didn't hear that. Who said that? Steven?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Reardon with a second. Eddie, on board, you ready for a roll call?
I am ready.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right, Dr. Lichstein.
I always end up going first here, that's interesting.
That's my list.
Well, this is a tough application for me. The, I certainly appreciate all the accommodations that the applicant has made. The, in my review, I find that the overwhelming reasons to favor this are greater than those, again, so I'm going to vote yes. All right. My reasons include that when compared to the existing zoning, commercial, this will, this project will have less coverage, less than purpose coverage, lower height. I find that there is no evidence that this will impair the zoning regulation currently in, in effect. I think it reflects the, the intent of the master plan, and, and I find that the site is suitable. It may not be as well-suited as I would like, but it's suitable, and in this environment, we're down the street at the west, and eighty percent of the stores are empty, I think that this applicant has the right to develop his property. I think he needs to find a, a solution to developing a property that's going to be economically viable, and I'm not sure that mixed use is the right, is the right solution here. The alternative would be, would be commercial, which I think is problematic, and given the reduction in the scope of the project, I think the applicant has done a good job in satisfying those needs, and I vote yes.
Mr. Alter?
Okay. The proposed multifamily residential use is currently not permitted in the commercial zone. The combined lots equal one point oh seven acres, and in my mind, would be better suited to two to three compliant single-family residences or even a retail project instead of twenty-four rental units. That number of units, which creates a proposed density of approximately twenty-two to twenty-three per acre, is in well in excess of the residential site improvement standards, which says six point one to ten units per acre is considered high density for this type of development. This is a significant change and will impair the commercial zones integrity for that area. Additionally, one of the special reasons cited by the applicant's planner and attorney was that this application satisfies a much-needed housing shortage in the community. With the new forty-acre unit, with the new forty-unit housing project going up around the corner and multi-units one block away, no credible evidence was shown to me to prove that argument and justify a D-variance. In fact, I believe that this use would not promote the general welfare of the community. Therefore, the site is not well-suited for this proposed use. The traffic study did not diminish my concerns regarding increased traffic on a street which already has many constraints and has been described by the police department as one of the most notorious corners in Hillsdale. And if D-variance and enhanced quality of proof is necessary, and in my opinion, that was not met, nor was the negative criteria, I believe this project substantially impairs the intent and purpose of the master plan. I therefore vote no.
Before you call another person, Ed, one thing I did not do is open it to the public after the attorney spoke, so I'm going to do that. I realize it's unorthodox, but I think it's better to correct it than not to. I'll open it to the public. If there's anyone listening on the public who has any, any comment that this board should consider, I'd like to hear from them. Hearing none, I'll close it to the public. Continue, Mr. Ed.
That was it. I vote no.
Oh, yeah, no, I got that, Ed.
I just wanted it to be detailed. I just wanted it to be detailed in my reasoning.
Yeah, and I apologize, and it was very good, and I meant the other Ed, though. Continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Vice Chairwoman Miano.
It's always difficult to go after Ed because he always says things so eloquently, but, you know, the reason, I mean, I've thought about this tremendously, and I listened to all the testimony, and I appreciate the, all the efforts that were made, you know, by the developer to make this more of a palatable project. But I keep going back to looking at, you know, the master plan and how, you know, the governing body, you know, chose to make, you know, various components, like various lots that were surrounding this piece of property into things that could be, you know, multifamily and using it towards working for that, you know, the, you know, the coa housing, and yet they, you know, deliberately didn't choose this series of lots to change. So I'm presuming that there was a reason why they left it as commercial, and I, I'm going to have to vote no. I also think that, I know that the traffic and the traffic studies always, you know, say that it will add very minimal traffic. However, if anyone who actually lives in Hillsdale has been stopped at the corner of Orchard and Broadway and attempts to make a left turn, they'll know that that's a very, very dangerous intersection. And finally, I'm not really sure that, you know, I know that they didn't really use, you know, you said, well, our, our coa housing hasn't been met through 2025, but for the period after that, and I'm not sure that that's actually compelling of enough of a reason, so I'm going to have to vote no.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes, I, I think Dr. Lichstein said the site is not as suitable as we would have liked to have to begin with, and that's, I guess, why they're here for a variance. The way I look at this, and it was a hard decision, there was, there was, I was being pulled by both sides, but what really, what really, I looked at it based on what could have been built there commercially, I feel that we're getting the best use of the property. I agree, it's, it's close to the transportation and buses and the mass transit, walking distance, and I like all those things, it's attractive to the community. The applicant has gone above and beyond, in my opinion, to try to accommodate the board's requests over and over again. They changed the footprint of the building, they changed the facade of the building, they came up with two different plans that we could have chosen from, they extensively changed the landscape, they accommodated us with the fence, the irrigation, the Belgium block. I think their intention is to make this look like we want Hillsdale to look, not the way that they want the building to look. So because of those reasons, is the density high? It is high, and, and that, that's really my biggest, was my biggest concern, but I think when you put, put it on a scale, I think my, my, the reason I voted yes is, is based on the reasons I just presented. If, if the applicant wasn't as accommodating and there was other alternatives that we could have looked at that were less, a commercial building with less traffic, which according to what we heard in the, in the past testimony was not possible, I think this is the best of, the best of all worlds, and because of those reasons, my vote is yes.
Mr. Reardon?
I'd like to say that with the application, regardless of the amount of times that we've have heard this throughout its course, I do feel that the pre-existing nonconformity of these lots, even though it's a commercial zone, but there are, well, I think there might be two family homes on these lots, I feel that a commercial application that we have zoned for it is just adding to the pot of spaces that we don't need downtown to restart a revitalization of what we do when we walk downtown in Hillsdale. I unfortunately feel that by adding any mixed use with more storefronts will just sit empty, unfortunately, throughout this course, and I think we'll be seeing a lot more storefronts go empty. So I feel that with invoking the rental and the residential aspects to possibly be the catalyst that starts to revive downtown, so my vote is yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman's not voting.
Chairman, Mr. Freeman is not voting, so Mr. Burleson is voting.
Yes.
Mr. Burleson?
Yes, so I would like to compliment the engineer and the landscape architect, they did a great job. They, they listened to us and they tried to make it better. It's a beautiful design, but notwithstanding, and I'm a very pro-growth, I want to see this property developed and a lot of other properties in a good way for Hillsdale, this application with a full residential proposal right next to the railroad tracks, in my mind, does not complement the downtown. It also landlocked some other properties that hopeful will be developed, so I question the streetscape, and again, I'm sorry, but for these reasons, I cannot support this project, I vote no.
Chairman Giancarlo?
Yeah, again, I'll make note of the, the accommodating. I think it was really good professional group of experts, and thank you for that. I also think that Elliot and Scott's points and Stevens were compelling. This is more of a tough one, more tough than I anticipated. Going, I wrote a couple of notes down, there have been similar projects in the past, but, you know, one of the things I'm considering too is considering this just on its own elements, and when other things were approved, we looked at what was there in the past, and what we're looking at here is three private homes being replaced by essentially twenty-four private homes and with those associated issues, and all, all that, that extra density comes with it, and I think I may have looked at this maybe in a different way, if we were looking at townhouses, or maybe it had some sort of commercial element with it, which would be more, at least a little more conforming, if there is such a thing. But even right now, we have, we would have a building, then we would have a house sandwiched between a, sandwiched, a private home sandwiched between a gas station and a, and a two-to-three story facade on the western side. It reminds me of those buildings that are in Manhattan that are sandwiched around skyscrapers or, or apothecaries and, and things like that. But overall, for me... Um, but overall, for me, it comes down to zoning. And we have three residential units down there representing a pre-existing non-conforming use. And the thing is about non-conforming uses is non-conforming uses are supposed to evolve or resolve into some sort of conforming use over, over time. And I think what we're doing here is, you know, I think planning board action should look to see that these non-conforming uses become, come, become conforming through, not through fiat, but through incremental changes over the course of time. And this application, I think, it seems to me, that's taken a pre-existing non-conforming residential use and making it a more intensive, uh, non-conforming use by exchanging three families for twenty-four. And, uh, I think it exasperates it. And speaking, you know, speaking, you know, I, I heard tonight it was an older obsolete use. Well, maybe the homes are old, but I don't think there's anything obsolete about the, the, the use of, of, uh, single-family homes right now. And a lot of, a lot of the argument, be it COVID or, or traffic or pollution, didn't really make, make an dent into me. I, I don't, I don't think there's anything per quote progressive, um, about this. Now, that's not to say that people weren't really, um, accommodating, that there wasn't a lot of wonderful art, uh, strides taken in terms of the architecture and the landscaping and things like that. I mean, and, and it does do, it does, you know, give us some more COA units. But again, we've been way ahead of, on things on COA. And, um, I think that we, you know, we have, we've looked at this and in terms of the architecture, uh, you know, Plan One was, you know, and I think your, your architect is good, but I, I don't know, I don't know if you guys were looking at the downtown buildings. I just, um, I don't, I don't think it goes with, with what we have downtown. And I, I'm hoping that future developers look, look at the three or four landmarks we have downtown and say, well, I want to fit in with that, as opposed to just making that, that little cook, you know, blueprint look, look good unto itself. It's gonna have to fit in there and, and, um, I would really love future developers to sort of look at that downtown and say, yeah, we, we, we need to sort of take that element to that train station or, or, or Marcellus or what have you. And, and let's play off of that and let's see, let's have it all fit together. But again, let's get back to zoning. For me, it, it does come down to zoning and I think that this town has looked at this property many times from a zoning standpoint. We looked at it in the master plan. We looked at it when we were putting a COA plan together and we looked right through it and we came up with different projects. The council recently looked at it. They looked at it a third time, came up with other properties. So for whatever reason, this property was not, had not come up as that, you know, as for redevelopment. So, um, I'm gonna vote no with that long-winded result.
Very good. So that is three affirmatives and four opposed.
I want to thank the applicant for coming before us. I'm sorry for the outcome, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm unmuting.
Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Would it be, I know that the next applicant's been very patient. Would it be possible to take a five-minute break?
Sure, certainly would.
I'm wearing like a truck. The Bejas both have a computer on, that's causing this. You have two computers on with this insane.
Our attorney has a computer.
Okay, that's, that's what it is.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, no. It sounded like a truck packing up in my living room.
It sounded that way here too. We just didn't know what that was.
That's, if you have two computers on with both of the volumes on for one of these meetings or a Zoom meeting, that's what's happened. I've spent, I, you know.
I had no idea.
If you need to take five, I want to give them some time. If you want to take five minutes, go ahead. I'm gonna let them present, okay? Yeah. I'm gonna read you into the record. Okay, just give me a second here. Okay, um, the next hearing is, um, PZ O one dash two O, Block fifteen O Lot, uh, One Lot Two. Ilda and Edward Behat, am I saying your last name correctly?
Beja, yeah.
Beja, I apologize. And that's, they're, they're part of Nees, Neesha LLC, three thirty Broadway. They're here for a use variance application to occupy commercial space with a residential unit. Um, okay, what we're going to do is we're probably gonna get, give you about twenty minutes tonight to about, think about ten thirty. So we're twenty-five minutes, okay? And so we're gonna have to move on to another night, but I want to give you an opportunity to present. If you need more time or it looks like we can wrap up quickly, we will. Otherwise, it may go to another night. So I'm just giving you fair warning right now, okay?
Thank you.
What we do in this type of case right now is, uh, are you folks representing yourself?
No, my name is Howard Siegel. I'm an attorney in Tina and I represent Mr. and Mrs. Beja and their corporate.
Good evening, Mr. Siegel. Thank you. Um, do you want to tell us in your word, you know, you know how to do this? Tell us what you were trying to do.
Okay, we are requesting a use variance to expand a legal non-conforming use. And, um. We have, have a report from, uh, from, uh, Marino. Marino declaring that the present building is a non-conforming building. There's a, a doctor's office on the first floor and there are two apartments upstairs. There was a second office on the first floor and that's what we want to convert to residence.
Thank you.
I think we're doing it again. Hi, sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Let's, yeah, let's, yeah, yeah, okay. Very good.
We got it.
Okay. All right. Back up a little bit, Mr. Freeman. You've been told that you have not.
Scaring that the property is a non-conforming use, um, at the present time. It's in a C-zone and it was turned down, uh, because the apartment, uh, that is an off, that we want to convert the office to, uh, is on the first floor. So I have my clients here. Now, a survey was done by Landtelme Curran's and I, if you would want to ask any questions of the survey, I don't know if you've reviewed it, um, but we do have someone from Landtelme Curran's available to discuss part of the new survey which was done with the application. If not, then we'll, I'll produce my, uh, one or two witnesses. So, uh, first I'll ask Mrs. Beja to be sworn in, um, and ask her questions. Do you want to swear her in?
Uh, Mrs. Beja, please raise, raise your right hand. I don't see your client.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You sure affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the whole, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name for the record and give us your, whatever address you choose. It could be your business address or your home address.
Ilda Beja, three thirty Broadway in Hillsdale.
Thank you, Ms. Beja.
Uh, now, Ms. Beja, when was the building built and what was its use at the time?
It was built in the eighteen hundreds and it was a single-family home.
Uh, and as the report from, um, Mr. Merlino indicates, there were, uh, various applications made and there was a certificate of occupancy issued in nineteen ninety-six, uh, to, with the description as business with two apartments. And then in two thousand and six, uh, the zoning officer signed off for a permit that was issued in the building department to remodel two of the apartments. Certificate of occupancy was issued for said work on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and six. So, uh, he concluded in his memo, the, it appears the apartments have existed in the building since nineteen seventy-five and have been rendered non-conforming uses. And, um, at this point, um, there is an apartment already, uh, in use. It had been used. So, Ms. Beja, please tell us, is the, first, let me assess, are the apartments upstairs at the present time occupied?
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, as it relates to the structure of the building, what do you intend to do regarding the structure?
Nothing is gonna be changed in the structure.
So is the only thing that's going to be done is to paint the apartments?
Yes, it just needs a fresh coat of paint.
And attached to the application, uh, on the last page is a copy of the plan which shows a full kitchen, which shows, uh, bedroom, uh, an entranceway. Now, tell the board what your intent is as far as, uh, entering into the premises if they give the permission to use it as living quarters.
The entrance would be through the rear of the building and it's wheelchair accessible on the, through the rear of the building to get into the apartment.
Um, uh, but there will also be an exit onto Broadway.
Yes, there's a, there's an entrance on both the back and the front of the building. Yes.
Uh, and, um, uh, would you tell us, uh, if you're familiar with number two thirty Broadway, uh, which is just south of our property?
Yes, that's a, uh, there's a chiropractor's office there and there's also, I believe, some residential, um, in that same building.
And what about two seventy-three Broadway?
That's where that new big complex is, where it's, I believe, is all residential.
And, uh.
The two ninety-seven is.
Two ninety-seven Broadway.
Yeah, that's the half where the green lawn is. That's the one that had residents on the first floor, correct? Yeah, that's also residential on the first floor.
So, so what we have here is a number of exceptions to the existing, uh, zoning code, which is a C-zone. But if you look at the zoning map of, uh, Hillsdale, uh, most of the streets in the zone, West Street, Parkview, Knickerbocker, all have residences. Some are one family, but many of them are one-family, uh, offices on the lower level and, uh, residences, uh, upstairs. Uh, and I, I think what my clients are trying to say is that this present time, with the difficulty of leasing office space and having, uh, another unit similar to what Hillsdale would like, not, uh, multis, multi-levels, but on one level, uh, wheelchair accessibility, and there is no structure, there's gonna be no building in connection with, uh, our application. It's just to use this premises as a residence. Now, did you have some other thoughts, Mrs. Beja?
Well, I, I do have some reasons that I think would be benefits, um, to using it as renting it to a family versus keeping it as a business. Well, the first thing is we've been trying to rent it for the past two years. So there's been a for-rent sign there for a business in the past two years. Um, I wrote some down here so I don't forget. Um, we would be reducing traffic by putting a family in that apartment versus a business that would have traffic running through the parking lot. There are plenty of, uh, parking spots available. We're not changing anything with the building. The, we're not changing anything with the structure. We're not changing anything with the way the building looks. We're keeping it exactly the same as it has been since the eighteen hundreds. It's a very beautiful building. Um, there are residential all around us. You know, to the north, to the south, to the east, to the west, there's, you know, all different types of uses. A lot of, um, single-family homes or apartments all around there. Broadway has a lot of for-rent signs lately. There's been a lot of buildings that have been going up for commercial, for, to rent for businesses. There are a lot of for-rent signs, which has not looked very attractive for a town. It's not good for a town to have so many vacancies. And with our current situation of this pandemic, no one is looking to open a business. So all of those new, new developments, all of those, you know, beautiful buildings that there have been putting up, no one's gonna be renting them because no one is really looking to open a business now. That is not a good thing for a town to have so many, you know, vacancies. Um, what else? It will also create a lot of economic hardship for all the business owners, for all the building owners, uh, because like I said, no one, I don't think anyone is gonna be opening a business. Our business has been closed for the past two and a half months, just like a lot of the businesses have on Broadway. So I feel that a lot of them will have a lot of the economic hardships and, and maybe even go out of business. So that is not a good thing for a town to have that going on there. Again, the benefits is we'd be bringing in a family, not a business, decreasing traffic, and nothing's gonna change about the building. It's gonna look exactly like it's looked. It has a beautiful landscaping, lots of trees. It looks like a, the beautiful Tudor that was built in the eighteen hundreds. At one time, it was, um, just a single-family home, so it was residential. I know things changed throughout the years, but, you know, we would like to go back and into maybe a little bit of its roots and rent it as, what? Yeah, it was an apartment at one point. There was a kitchen in there, there's bathroom, you know, a bathroom, a shower. We wouldn't be changing anything to it. We would just put a fresh coat of paint on it.
I, I would mention, uh, under Title Forty, uh, the municipal, the board has the right to grant a variance, uh, and they could do that by an expansion of a non-conforming use, which this building is, is, is the non-conforming. I'd be glad to have the board ask my clients any questions.
Very good. Well done. Nice presentation. Let me just open it to the public first, because they tend to forget on these things. So first, open it to the public. If anyone's on, on this, uh, video chat and has a question for this applicant or the board even, please state your name and let us know. None, I'll move around to the board. And Elliot, we won't start with you. We'll start with Dewey Burleson.
There you go. Um, maybe I could ask for a little help from Chris, please? Uh, sort of the history of this property and how it was at one point used, I'm understanding, as a apartment and now it's not? Chris?
Yes, uh, I want to bring up an exhibit and I need assistance from the applicant because I'm a little bit confused. If the board will just, uh, wait a second here. Uh, hold it. I put together, if you can see this, I put together what is the current approved floor plan for the building, which was two doctor's offices. Let me see if I can get this up here. See, there you go. It's upside down because that was the orientation I received. So what you see there is the first floor plan. I've drawn a red line to demarcate the right-hand side is the side we're talking about, the left-hand side, I guess, remains as a doctor's office. This was the last approved plan. I guess remains as a doctor's office. This was the last approved plan, which shows two physicians' offices on the first floor, waiting area offices, waiting area offices. So, that's what I have in my files, went through my files, is what was approved. I'll scroll down a little bit. Now, I'm going to scroll down and you're going to start to see what's proposed. So, I have a question for the applicant, I guess. Has the first floor been modified to change it into a residential unit already? Or is that drawing that's? Okay, then the drawing on the top is what's there. The drawing on the bottom is what you want to do.
It's never been taken out.
I'm trying to, I think it's upside down.
It is.
He said that.
Okay, so, no, I don't think the first one is accurate.
So, you're saying this
The current one, the one that's below it, that's the one that's accurate. It never looked like that. That the The town don't look like that. They look like the one that is that the bottom one, the one that's currently there. Nothing was
This has already been converted to a single-family unit, in other words, and it was approved by the building department?
No, no, nothing was changed on it, but it doesn't look like that. The the one, the plans that are registered with the town when the when we bought the building and we applied, we never even changed anything when we bought the building on the first floor. We just put a wall in between the two offices. There was another business there. There was another business there. Maybe if she applied to change to change it to the way it looks now, because we did not. Oh, you mean?
Can I, can I ask this to the applicant? Can I ask the applicant, when did you purchase this property?
In
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six.
And and did you have, you had tenants, businesses? What did you have at the time when you bought it?
Yes, since two thousand six, there have been two, two, two different businesses there, and they did apply to put another wall. And I guess that's the wall that seems different to me. Where it says waiting area, an existing wall, I believe that might have been put in by the tenant.
Okay, the tenants being businesses, correct?
Yes, yes, the business, yeah, but they left.
So, you have no one or you haven't rented as a family yet, but you're suggesting that you're asking for that. Okay. I'm just trying to be clear here. What's what's
And on the lower picture, there's an area of kitchen, which has been in, been there since the inception of there was there be prior to my clients buying the building and it's still there. And it was there while the two business tenants were there.
Okay, is it is it conforming safety-wise for a family without doing any work?
We believe so.
It's gone through fire inspections.
Yeah, I mean, it's gone through the fire inspections and all that. I'm assuming, yeah. I'm assuming it would be since it has gone through the fire inspections.
How long ago was it? You say you bought this house, this this building with that configuration since two thousand six? This this part of the building has remained vacant since two thousand six?
No, this, 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 this part of the building has been vacant for a year.
What was there before then?
It was a therapist's office.
And it looked like the configuration, it looked like the lower configuration, the therapist's office, you'd walk into the back to a foyer and into
Yes, you could either walk in through the back or through the front.
I don't see a, on this drawing, I don't see a front of the bill. I don't see any doors. I see window, 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 windows. I don't see a door.
No, the middle, the middle, the middle part is a door. That's that I believe that door was existing from the eighteen hundreds. Yes, that door there, yes.
And because down here, I don't, I looks like a window, but okay, you say that's, I don't see any, I see no swing like a door swinging like an architect.
I think it's just a little
I think it's too light.
It's a little too light to see, but there's definitely a door there.
So, this was used commercially in the current
My question is, what are you proposing?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, your audio is not great, Dewey. I'll speak again. You're proposing to have this as a business in an office? I'm sorry.
I still can't hear you.
Put a stove and a refrigerator.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, my question was this. My, my question was this. You're proposing to have this as a business in one section and residential in another?
No, one, one living quarters in the whole area, which is below, which is below the other diagram.
Yes, to the right, to the right of the building is a doctor's office. To the left of the building, we want to do it as a residential, like it is on top, on the second floor.
The residential is only on the second floor, yours?
Yes.
At the present time.
Okay, I have no further questions. Steven, why don't you take a try?
So, just going to, you know, slowly through the architectural, you know, without any, you know, bedroom egress or fire codes. Now, the fire, you can't say that it's okay due to fire code because he's been inspecting it as a business-to-business backing with the residential above it. You actually need to totally different fire ratings and, you know, there's other architectures on the board that can back me on this, where you're going to have a different rating between the two floor units, actually. But besides that, I could just get a quick response. So, what I'm looking at, that Chris Teteal put up on the screen, the lower hardline drawing is, is the walls are already in this layout? Is that what we're hearing?
Yes, yes. And there's, there is nothing above it.
And so, you're literally saying that you are making, just calling this a rental unit for residential opposed to being an office now, without changing anything but paint?
Correct.
Yes.
That is, wow, okay.
It was an apartment at some point in time.
There's a shower and a bathtub already in this?
Yes, yes. At one point, this was an apartment years ago before we purchased the building. So, there's, there's a shower. There's, there's actually two bathrooms there. There's a kitchen already in there.
Okay, so maybe your lawyer can answer this. What is the use group of this of this building, of this floor?
Well, it's in a commercial zone. And in Hillsdale, there's mixed uses all up and down Broadway. So, this would be a, an extension of the nonconforming use, which was determined by Mr. Marino.
Okay. That the use group would be separate from the zoning use. I'm more, what was the previous tenant that that obviously did this layout change? What kind of a business?
A therapist.
There's a therapist office, okay. And then, so, I, I mean, I don't think I have any further questions. I mean, if you're really not doing any work to this unit, and that's what you're saying, so you're not changing windows, doors, nothing?
Nothing.
No.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Okay, Mr. Alter.
No, I, I just think that you really have a true hardship during these tough times renting this as an office. So, I can understand where you're coming from. I do have a question. Do you intend to live there or do you intend to rent it out?
We intend to rent it out.
Okay, that was my only question.
Dr. Lickstein. Couple of questions. How many people do you think will be living there?
Well, it's, it's about eleven hundred square feet. So, we're thinking maybe two, possibly three.
You're going to market it as a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom? What are you gonna?
We're thinking one bedroom, that that one area in the front as a bedroom.
You, you mentioned that you're surrounded by residential. Can you tell me, I mean, the way I'm looking at Google Earth on my, on my other computer right now, just to the south of you, what is, what property is there?
To the south of us, there it's, oh, we wrote it down. Two thirty and the two seventy-three and the two ninety-seven. And those are just the mixed-use ones, the ones that have office and residential. But all around us, like just, just behind us, where where we actually have a little bit of property behind us with, you know, trees and all that, and just behind that, that's all single-family homes. Right across from us, there's some businesses, but behind that, there's also residential homes.
Isn't there a gas station just next to you?
Just to the left.
To the left of us, there's a gas station, yes. And to the right of us is a sports expert.
You have a sporting, a sporting goods store, right?
Yes, sports expert.
Your two adjacent neighbors are both commercial. They're not residential.
Yes, but there's, but above sports expert is an apartment. And just behind us, right behind us, the property that borders ours behind us is their single-family homes.
That's a residential district.
Yeah, that's, that's all residential, not commercial. But you're two adjacent neighbors on Broadway. One's a gas station and one, and one's a mixed-use, nonconforming property, I imagine, right? Wasn't this, wasn't this a real estate agent? Wasn't this Sobek Realtors?
Yes, it was.
So, when, when was the real estate agent in there?
Oh, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it was in the seventies, seventies or eighties. I'm not, I can't answer that specifically because I don't, I don't know.
I don't think so. I moved to town in eighty, eighty-six and it was there then. So, it's certainly
Okay, I can't answer that because I don't know a hundred percent.
But, but, but the last time the downstairs was residential was when?
Um, before, before we bought it, before we bought it. We bought it in two thousand six. And this is before we bought it. Apparently, there's a lot of history on that building. You know, it's been a lot of different things. They put some additions on it. We did not put any addition. We just fixed it up a little bit on the inside. But I, I don't know when that last time was.
Certainly is a historic building. All right, thank you. Ms. Miano. I can come back, Joanne.
No, no, it's okay. I'm just, just remind me, it's empty now, right?
Yes, it's been empty for a little over a year. Yeah.
Okay. And it seems odd that you could change an office into an apartment with no no changes, but it's hard to tell from this picture.
If you ever look inside the building, it's a very historic-looking building, even in the office, in the doctor's office. The walls are stone. The bathroom looks old. It's just an antique-looking building. And the businesses that have rented there have kind of kept it that way because that's how they liked it. So, it, it looks beautiful for a resident, for an apartment. It really does.
We find out who drew the picture for everybody's, who drew this picture of this, this layout?
Who drew the picture?
Was it an architect, a professional?
No, it's not professional, no. It was our Realtor. When we were trying to rent it, the Realtor drew that. He said he had someone draw it, but I don't know who the Realtor had draw it. I can't answer that. I don't know exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne, do you have any further questions?
No, thank you.
Daniel, you're, you're up.
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, picking up on, Stephen said, I, I do believe since you are changing the use here and separating between two different uses, the rating of that wall could presumably change. So, you'd have to sort of evaluate and make sure that it meets the fire rating required between two different uses. I also said, I don't know if you can rent out, if it has a full kitchen and showers and, you know, I would think there would be some sort of health code things there. But that being said, so does the other side of the commercial space have the same layout with? Does it have the same kitchen bathrooms?
No, no. It has just one powder room.
Okay. The, okay, I mean, I don't have the drawing. I don't think I received the drawings. I don't know how much else I could say.
The, the previous tenant used the, the big bathroom that had the shower in it. They used it as storage.
They, they use the powder?
No, they use the powder room as a bathroom for, you know, because they used to do therapy, mental therapy or whatever it's called. And so, they use the powder room, but they use the, the, the one that you said, the health codes, the one with the shower, they didn't use the shower. They just kept it the way it was and used it as a storage. They would store their files in there.
I mean, it seems like it was used as a residence at some point. But, I mean, it had to be. All right, I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Raymond.
Thank you. Did we get any plans for this, Chris? I don't, I don't, I checked my, my computer. I didn't see the plans we received.
Well, you got, there was a survey submitted that just showed the existing lot, you know, as, you know, as the current, is configured basically, a survey. And this drawing you see was in the application package itself, this floor plan. That was all we had, the two things.
So, it wasn't submitted to the board?
Hey, this, yeah, what you're looking at is, this was part of the application, the, the floor plan, it's part of the application package. And I got a, I got a survey of the property, which showed, just showed the property as it is today, no change to it.
All right, my question is, did we see this? Because I didn't see this until just now. So, my, my concern is this. I, I'm looking at the plan and and maybe, let, let me talk to the applicant real quick. Can you describe the building to me? Because I'm having a hard time conceptually trying to figure out, am I going in the first floor? Are there two units on the first floor, one on the top? Can you explain to me the, the configuration of the building?
Yes, in the eighteen hundreds, there was a small, single-family home. And since then, many, many years ago, two additions were put, one on either side. Now, above those additions that were put, there, there is nothing above it. It's just, I'm trying to explain it. There's nothing above like where, where the kitchen is.
Well, there's two, there's two units on the bottom.
Yes, so you would walk in from the, from the first floor, that would be on Broadway, or around the back in the parking lot, there, there's also a rear entrance. That's the one that's wheelchair accessible. So, and then you would walk into like a little foyer and walk into the building. So, you would walk into the first floor.
So, there's only, there's only a first floor then?
No, there's also a second floor. The second floor, you have, you walk in through the rear and there's some concrete steps or, or, um, concrete steps and you walk up the steps and you would walk into the second floor through the rear of the building.
Okay, so there's two units on the first floor, one unit on the second floor?
No, there's, there's two apartments on the second floor also, but they're smaller. It's one, it's a two-bedroom apartment and the other is just a small studio apartment. So, you would walk in also into a small vestibule and then there's two doors, one for each apartment, one for the studio apartment and one for the two-bedroom apartment.
So, is it safe to say there's four units?
Yes.
Okay, four units. And one of the units used to be a, a commercial unit and you're converting that into a residential unit?
Yes.
Okay. And these plans that I'm looking at, were they submitted by you or were they submitted by, did you get them from the town? Did an architect? I think Daniel mentioned something about that, that the top plans seem to be different from the bottom plans. Who prepared each plan?
Our Realtor prepared. The, the top plans, I guess, were the plans that were in the town. The bottom plan, like I, I mentioned, we had a Realtor because we had been trying to rent it and they had someone draw it up. The fellow came in and, you know, he measured and he looked at everything and he made, he had someone, I don't know who, he had someone draw this up and that's what he said. Yeah, I think he had an architect draw it up or someone in his, in his business. I don't know.
And that's the bottom plan that I'm looking at now that was drawn up, but it's not, but does not exist now?
No, that exists now, yes.
Okay. And the fire inspection, what I'm concerned about, you're changing this from commercial to residential. And I know it was brought up, but are you aware, or Chris, are you aware from changing from commercial to residential? Do you need other hardwired alarms needed? What is the protocol going from commercial to residential?
I couldn't tell you. I'm really not I couldn't tell you. I'm not, I'm really not, first, I'm not an architect, you know, so I'm not sure at that. I mean, there's fire separation requirements, obviously. But I, I couldn't tell you. The, the board architects should probably tell you better than that, than I could.
And, and
Can I make, can I make a question to you? Um, I've seen these sort of applications elsewhere, not necessarily in Hillsdale. Uh, if the board determines it wants to act favorably on this application, it's subject to any and all codes. Uh, that may, that may apply, including fire separation, sprinkling, fire alarms and the like. So before the applicant can move forward with any sort of conversion, the applicant will be obligated to secure all permits. And, and ensure compliance with codes, including the building.
Yeah, yes, we, we, we definitely agree to that, but I, I think that when we renovated the building between two thousand and six and two thousand and eight, I'm pretty sure every, well, I, I am sure that everything was brought up to code. And, uh, there are the hardwire smoke detectors, hardwire alarms, all that is, has been put in. And there are, we did the, in the middle, where originally was the, the original building from the eighteen hundreds. There's the spray insulation and all that in between. So everything has been brought up to code.
Okay, and just so I understand, there's one bath, is that right? One bath?
There's two baths, two.
One, two baths.
There's a powder room and then there's a, a shower room.
And, and, and this is going to be rented just, just because I have a question. It's going to be rented in, in, as a, a single bedroom?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think that's all I have for now. Okay, Chris, can we possibly get a copy of this diagram? Or can you download this for us so we can talk about it and take a better look at it for the next, um, continuation?
Sure, we'd be glad to do that. I'll send you the, I'll send the, I, I thought you got the application package. I'll send it to you with the lower drawing and, uh, that's fine. This exhibit is, well, it was attached to the application.
And I would have thought that each member of the board would have a copy of the application.
Chris?
If you have a copy of the application, uh, the last page was this diagram.
I don't have a copy. That's why I asked for it.
Yeah, I said, yeah, it was, it was, uh, it was on, it was on the Borough website as well. I'm sorry if you didn't get it. I, I, I don't remember why, but okay. Yes, I'll be, I'll make sure everybody gets the application package tonight, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have questions, Ms. Cates?
Um, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I meant to ask this earlier. I was talking. There was a lot of noise from the static. This applicant, Nylema, is actually my eye doctor, so I don't know if I can participate. That was my question.
No, I, I, I mean, you know, we've had a long discussion regarding what, uh, what's a personal interest. I think that we have sufficient board members here tonight. I don't think it's worth the risk. So my recommendation would be that you recuse yourself. I'm not saying that you're necessarily conflicted, but would have to get into a long.
That was what, that was my instinct. I'm sorry. In this forum, it was hard to be heard, so I apologize.
Okay, uh, what we're gonna do next is Caroline, I know you worked on this. Why don't you help us? Because I think everyone, yeah, we're gonna break for the night in a minute, but I would like, I, I know you put some work into this, so let's, let's hear from what, what you have to say.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so I did review the application as you requested. I prepared a report dated May eighteenth. Hopefully, I, I believe I sent it to everybody. Um, I know the applicant received it as well. Hello?
You did. Go ahead. Yes, thank you for that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I heard something odd. Um.
Oh, you could, there's all sorts of feedback and stuff, so I wouldn't, wouldn't worry about it. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so this, in this situation, the subject property is in a commercial district. Um, and there is a commercial use on the main floor. There's an eye doctor and a vacant commercial space. Upstairs, there are two residential apartments. That is what makes this what's called a non-conforming use. In other words, zoning doesn't permit the apartments. So, uh, we have to first see that the uses were permitted at some point in time. Either they predate zoning or there, there was a zone change. And there has been testimony about COs issued previously, I believe one was two thousand and six and one was nineteen ninety-six. So there has been some, say validity of the uses from the municipality. Now, what the applicant is proposing to do is take one of the commercial units and use that as a residential apartment, thereby my mind, expanding the non-conforming use. Um, which is why I indicated the variance was, that was needed was what was called a D two variance. That refers to the section, this, of the statute. Uh, under the variances, number two, expansion of a non-conforming use. Ms. Beja, you have no idea when this was used as an apartment and at some point it was, when you purchased it, it was used, this pro, this, this, um, this unit was used for a commercial use?
Uh, what was going on? I don't, it was so long ago.
When we bought it.
It was empty when we bought it. The
Rented it commercially.
Yeah, then we rented it. When we bought it, the upstairs apartments were gutted. Um, and we bought it in that condition. So that's when we went to the town and we did the applications and we had a, you know, an architect come and do all that. And, and that's when we fix, finished fixing it because it was, it was halfway gutted.
Was it used as a residence upstairs?
Upstairs was, yes, but it was being renovated when we purchased it. Yes, it was being used as a residence. But it was being renovated. We finished the upstairs and we finished res, renovating it. The downstairs, the only thing we did to it, um, other than, you know, cosmetic, was put a wall in between the two offices. To divide, a dividing wall.
So I'm sorry, so before you bought it, there was no wall? So there was just one commercial use downstairs?
Yes.
No.
No?
Only, only here in the foyer.
Only in the foyer?
I, I, I need to know, I, I'm, it's, I, this is such a frustrating, I mean, it's wonderful we have it during this pandemic, but it's frustrating. I'm hearing, I'm hearing multiple voices.
I'm, yeah, I'm hearing a lot of in and out, too.
Um, I'm hearing multiple voices responding to my questions.
Most of our mics are off. I'll turn off.
It, it almost sounds as if somebody is speaking when Ms. Beja is speaking next to her. So, um, I just, you know, Nylema, I don't know. I just need to know who's testifying, so.
There's somebody in the room with her.
Yeah, there's, our, my attorney and my husband are here.
Okay, but ma'am, if I can just say something, um, we're making a record here. So everybody should, only one person should be speaking at a time. If, if your husband wants to be sworn and testify, he's certainly free to do that. But it, it's going to make it very, very difficult if somebody's listening to this and they have to create a transcript.
Okay, I was only asking him some questions because I don't remember because it was so long ago. So I'm trying, I'm trying to have him remind me of what actually happened.
That's, that's fine. I was just getting confused because I was hearing more different people respond to my questions and I can't see you because of the, um, the exhibit that's up. So I prepared this report that goes through their criteria that's, you know, typically looked for, the positive and negative criteria with respect to an application like this. I mean, I, with respect, I've heard no testimony. I've heard where you believe there are residential uses nearby and why you believe this is a benefit and that you've been unable to rent out the commercial space. But there are specific proofs that need to be responded to, for example, like, you know, the master plan. Um, purposes of zoning, things like that with respect to an application. So I, um, I don't know if you reviewed any of the master planning documents, but, Ms. Naby, do you want to, do you have any?
I would love to because I, I'm, I'm just getting back and holding back. So one of the, one of the concerns that I have is that the burden of proof is on the applicant. The burden of proof is on the applicant. What I mean by that is the applicant has to come forward with affirmative proofs to show that this is in fact a pre-existing non-conforming use. I'm not convinced that the board has, has seen sufficient evidence or that the applicant has submitted such evidence to this body. The board may feel otherwise. I've had similar applicants before other boards where we had an applicant come before the board and say, look, I want to expand a non-conforming use. It really has nothing to show the board. And what I mean by that is, when the applicant purchased the property in two thousand and six, there would have been a contract of sale. There would have been a certificate of occupancy or some other documents to show what the uses were in two thousand and six when the applicant purchased, uh, the, the subject. So Caroline, I, I love your question. I don't know if you agree with me or disagree, but I'm just not convinced that this board has what it needs at this point in time in order to evaluate the application.
What we're going to do, thank you, Nylema. Did I cut you? You have more to say?
No, no, I was just gonna say, aside from the planning testimony, it's also a question of proofs. I'm not suggesting other thing that the board needs to have solid evidence in front of it before the board makes a decision.
Well, we, we, we definitely have the proof that, you know, when we purchased the building, there was, you know, the contract of sale. And, uh, when we went to the town for the applicant, for the permits to, uh, fix, you know, renovate the home, you know, all of that is on file with the town. Because we, we applied for permits and, you know, when we were doing the renovation, we had all the inspections and we had everything that was done that we should have done. We had all the, you know, the architectural plans and everything. And then we got all the approvals and we got the final CO. So we definitely have all of that.
And we, we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I, I was just gonna say, so the board should have the benefit of those documents in order to evaluate your application to make this a hundred percent residential instead of a mixed use, to convert the existing commercial space into residential.
We're not looking to make it a hundred percent residential. We're looking to keep it as a non-conforming mixed use. Because we're still keeping the one office on the first floor. We're still keeping the eye doctor's office on the first floor.
And we, we, we know what you're saying, but the, the thing is, you're trying, you're trying to change a non-conforming use. So not only do we need those historical documents that Nylema get, got into, you, you have to show us why, why it's, it's a negative good or a na, a negative good or not inherently bad to do so. And those are also called proofs. So it's not, it's not just document. Your, your lawyer knows what I'm talking about here. And so it's, it's, on something like this, it's not enough to say, look, it's a really good idea because, you know, the economic conditions in the town. Otherwise, everyone could get that. And what we need as a board is why should we give you the permission when we don't give everyone else the permission? And that's what, where, where your, your lawyer knows what was, how, how to satisfy those things. Or at least how to argue towards satisfying those things. And that's why I think it's actually not a bad time to take a pause because it's going to allow you not only to get those historical documents for us to all look at, but your, your, Mr. Siegel time to, 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 to make a persuasive case why this board should give you an exclusive permission to change. Not that it won't happen. I'm not saying that, so don't read into that. But in other words, that's how this, the presentation before a planning board happens and that's what we have to evaluate. So, um, it, I'm noting the time. It's ten fifty-four on, on my watch. Um, I think that we're gonna take a pause and we'll, we'll try to schedule at the next meeting if that's possible in terms of timing. Um, but I, I think to give you the best possible shot, I think you need, you do need the time to do this, these things.
And just so that I'm clear, as it relates to, uh, Anthony, uh, Martino's letter where he, in a sense, declared it that it's a non-conforming use, that's not sufficient? Because he went back, uh, and gave explanation, uh, as to the various zoning officers. And in his letter to, uh, to me, and I assume the board has the letter. Uh, certificates of occupancy were issued, uh, for, uh, two apartments and for an office. And, and there was a second office. And he, he set forth that, uh, he rendered it a non-conforming use. So that's not sufficient?
That was, that, that's dealing with the upstairs apartments. That's nothing to do with this application at all. This application is for a conversion of an existing commercial use to residential use. Mr. Martino's talking about the two upstairs apartments, which are non-conforming. They were reconstructed in two sixty-six. So I think you're, I think there's a little obfuscation here. We're getting a little, you know, I think Mr. Martino's correct. There's a commercial use here. It was a commercial use next door to this, this, this property and our two upstairs apartments. That's all Mr. Martino's saying here. He's not providing any information whatsoever about the residential future of this northern wing, I would say. Am I correct?
There's really, there's really
I hear what you're saying, so, and, and I don't know how we're going to be able to get that information.
Um, so the way I see it is there's kind, there's sort of like two steps. So the first step is proving that it's exactly, that it is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Just because something has been there forever doesn't necessarily make it a pre-existing non-conforming use. It has to be legal at its inception, which is what I believe our, uh, Ms. Naby was discussing. Then if, at that time, that the board, should they determine that this was a pre-existing non-conforming use? Then you have the variance to expand it. That's a use variance, Mr. Siegels. I'm sure you're aware and I detailed in my letter. And there's very specific proofs that are required for a use variance. You have to beat the positive and negative criteria, relate to the, the, the purposes of zoning. You have to talk about, everything should relate back to the site suitability and then you have discussions about the master plan. So that's where my questioning had kind of started, is how were those proofs going to be met?
Oh, I, I heard what you said and so, um, I, I think we need some time to try to get your answers.
Okay, with, with Nylema, um, they're going to have to extend, um, what do we have? Ed Manger, what do we have in terms of coming up? Do you have a, a calendar in front of you?
I've got that, Mike.
Okay, sorry, Chris.
That's okay. It's just, it's orchestrated the meeting. We have June, we have nothing ahead of us. June eleventh, twenty-third of June and July sixth are all open, are all open right now. We do have two applications that are been deemed complete, uh, major site plan applications and a subdivision application, which you'll see later in the agenda. So yes, you can boot this to whatever Mr. Siegel wishes. June eleventh, June twenty-third or July sixth are the next three meetings. They're all open.
Mr. Siegel and, uh,
July ninth, excuse me. It was July ninth.
Well, and what about June eleventh, you said?
June eleventh, June twenty-third and July ninth.
Correct.
Well, I think we ought to see, we'll try to get our information together by June eleventh.
Okay, we'll tentatively put it, put it on that, that night. And if you have a problem, you let us know, right?
Yes.
We don't, we don't like to drag these things out. Trust us. We like to clear our calendar and have days off too. But I, I, I assure you that there's more housekeeping to be done here, just from what we hear with other applicants. Mr. Chairman?
I can answer the question?
Yes. Yes, who's, who, Mr. Burleson, is that you?
Yes, correct, correct. Yes, I would just like to, uh, maybe add if the applicant could bring some pictures because I have a pretty good, uh, visual. Uh, and I'm ha, I'm having trouble with what makes this property unique in the storefront to the entrance in the back. I wonder if that would be helpful. For us to help.
Okay.
Should we send it to Mr. Teal's office?
Chris, would you like it at your house? Yep, alright, I should, Caroline, yep, okay.
Mr. Siegels, Mr. Siegels already provided you with, uh, five photographs. I already have five photographs. I can bring them up if you wish. I mean, I didn't bring them up yet because, you know, the applicant asked me to, but I have those, I have those photographs.
Let's see that at the next meeting. We're not gonna see them tonight, but let's see them at the next meeting, okay?
Very good. I have the five photographs he provided.
And if you think that's enough, Chris, I mean, ask them for another five if you think, if you want some more photos, okay? Let's not, you know, if, okay?
Well, these are all adjacent, these are all adjacent across the street. These are all commercial properties around the subject.
We would like to see inside if that's okay, just to help us a little bit here, you know, the, the back door, things like that, you know, the back door.
Siegel asks for you to, yes.
And we don't need to see the whole house. We just need to see the unit in question.
Okay.
Alright, so you would, you would like to do June eleventh if possible, correct, counsel? All right, so you would like to do June 11th if possible, correct, Counsel, Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Okay. Nylema?
Jerry, I'll be in touch with you.
We'll need an extension of time, Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Does the applicant waive all statutory timeframes and extend the time for this board to act?
Yes.
Thank you. Maybe we shouldn't just make an announcement. That this is being carried to June 11th at 7:30 PM and the meeting will be conducted virtually. If anybody's interested in this application, you will not receive any further notice from the applicant or from this board.
Okay, very good. Um, I I would also, I'm just gonna open it to the public and see if the public has any even if we started by opening to the public, but we'll do it again. Um, anyone from the public have any questions of this applicant right now? Please speak. Hearing none, we'll close it to the public and, okay, Ilda and Ed and Howard, we're gonna see you on June June 11th, okay? And you look like you all have the whole night there if we need so far, okay? We don't have anyone else scheduled. Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too. Thank you.
Board, we have a few more things to do. We just have completeness review and I'll get you out of here. Uh, two completeness reviews. They were scheduled after our hearings. Um, if you could take this the screen down, that would be helpful, too, so we can see everyone's mug. The first one is PZ 6-18 block, 1308 lots, 15 and 16, RJN 333 LLC. There, the applicant at 333 Washington Avenue. We remember them to come up with something different, I imagine. Chris, why don't you tell us about it?
Yes, the applicant originally came to us for townhouses and then came in for a three lot subdivision. They have since amended their application to three lot subdivisions, so they are complete. There will be bulk variances with the three lots on Washington Avenue opposite the Edlin Square. They're ready to go for a public hearing.
Um,
I believe due to notice requirements, I think the earliest you get everybody probably on the 23rd, we could hear them.
I'm okay with the 23rd. Anything else, Board? Do you want any 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 objections? 23rd it is, Chris.
Okay, very good.
Put them down. And then, um, we have PZ 02-20 block 1212 lots 15.02, the Preserve at Hillsdale Patterson Street. They they already have approved a 40-unit apartment approval resolution that their that resolution was 2007-09. They're amending it somehow with a bulk variance for two new carports and access and an accessory building. Tell us about that, Chris.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The applicant desires to convert some surface parking and provide a, I guess, a roof or shelter over the top of some of the parking on site. I don't think they're changing any parking numbers. They just want to add to house those. And they also have an accessory building in front, which houses their water, their water service for their hydrants, a back flow preventer and a meter. Rather than using what we call a hot box, they built a building over it, which I've told them it's an accessory building. It looks like literally a building. So they're coming in for those, uh, major site plan revisions, basically, is what they're looking for. And they require they require bulk variances.
Excuse me, Chris, does that open up the use? Does was there a discussion about if that opened up the use variance again?
Not yet. We haven't talked about that yet. This is for Nylema. So the applicant got a use variance for the 40 units that were there because it was not zone, it was industrial zone. They want to add carports and an accessory building. Ira has argued that it's not a expansion of the use variance. We argued it was, but I leave that in your hands because what was the, he says that based based on case law, once you approve the use change, then everything else flows beyond that. I I don't know. It's up for Nylema to opine.
Chris, I have a question about that. Do we need to have some type of expert that's that that knows knows something about commercial carports?
This is Well, they're really they're really residential for residential use.
Look, 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 looking at the at the packet that I saw, you know, you're talking about a commercial structure, you know, no cantilevers, posts where people drive. I I I just wondered whether or not they should come in with an expert or whether we we should have our own experts look at the at this, so.
Well, we can we can suggest that to the applicant's attorney. I could do that, sure. And I could, if you want a garage expert, garage expert as well. Sure.
Go ahead, Nylema.
I had a similar application on the app of an applicant in Cliffside Park where applicant went before the board. I didn't represent the applicant. They received an approval. It was for a multi-family building. They then decided that they wanted to build these garages for high-end vehicles. Is this something similar to to what I just described? Not necessarily high-end vehicles, but just carports?
That's exactly right. These are carports, they're gonna get more rental rental value out of the profits what you're doing by having, you know, roofs over the top of the parking. Correct. It's exactly the same thing. And you want you want to talk? Yes, I think I'd suggest that, so we get the application set up properly.
Chris, can they provide pictures of what these units and and carports are gonna look like so we can have a visual as well?
Uh, there are, we have architectural plans, Scott. I'll make sure everybody has those. I mean, it shows an elevator. Um, I don't know, photographs, I'd have to ask Ira about photographs or something similar.
Is something similar, just so I can have an idea what it looks like?
Sure. I don't see why not. Yep.
Does that affect affect building coverage?
No, because they're going on top of the, well, building coverage, yes. Impervious coverage, no, because they're going on top of already approved asphalt parking spaces.
But it's building, but building coverage does, right?
Building, it would, yes, it would pick up building coverage, but you know, it's such a large lot because of all the dwellings in the back and all the unused property. I don't I don't think of an issue with that, but it's certainly something. We'll make sure we look at that, though. Thank you.
Chris, did you get a answer to your legal question from Nylema?
I think Nylema is gonna speak to Ira about that, the applicant's attorney.
Okay, very good. Okay.
And they would just, they can just change your application if that's the case. It's mostly about the fees, actually. July 9th is open, if you want to, you know, put on July 9th.
July 9th, let's, yeah, put it out on July 9th. I'm fine with that. Any board members, it's gonna be summer, but, you know.
I don't think anybody's going anywhere.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
The accessory building is already constructed. If you go by the site, you'll see the accessory building right in front. It's pretty obvious.
What do you mean the accessory building? Something they're coming before us for?
Yes, they are. Yeah, it was built and they thought it was just covering the water meter. I go, no, that's got a roof and it looks like a gatehouse. That's a building. That's an accessory structure. So they're they're putting that in your application.
What's the size of it? Just out of curiosity, what did they build? Just out of curiosity?
It's probably 20, 25 foot long by 10 foot wide. It's got doors, you know, windows.
That's quite a building, not to tell. I mean, I'm I'm sorry, but, you know, that's just a big, it's not a 10 by 10. It's not an eight by 10 there.
Right. The application had a what we call a hot box. It's really just a big cabinet with doors to open up to access the water meter. This is actually a building you can walk in with a door. It has, you know, it's it's big. If you go by the site, you'll see it right out front. You can't miss it.
Yeah, no, this is, yeah, okay.